Norris?
James Nacito.
Doug Neely, Commissioner?
Rocky Smith, Commissioner?
Would you please stand and join me in the flag.
You forgot me.
And on the phone we have.
On the phone we have Daphne West, recuperating from a surgery.
And Daphne, will you please stand and join us?
I certainly will. I'll face due south. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice for all.
Thank you, and Happy New Year. Welcome to a new year of exciting events. We'll begin with an update under Presentations from one of our Clackamas County Commissioners, Bob Austin. It's nice to have you here this evening, and we'd love to hear what you and the county are up to.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Burris. It's really wonderful. There is just such a wonderful building, or we were coming to the dedication. I'm already writing this. I'm getting used to saying 2010, but it really is a wonderful story.
Out of it.
Actually, I've got to get used to saying 2010.
2010. Well, I thought 2010.
See, people are singing both ways.
Well, we'll have to get it figured out. We have a few years to figure it out. But one of the things I wanted to do, and I think I want to really spend a lot of time. This is across the county from the hinterlands. I'm from Estacada. County, very rural, very urban.
To one of the CPOs and listening to their concerns, and they'll have a different set of concerns than folks in Oregon City. So we're trying to go out and reach out to make sure we don't leave anybody off the table in terms of listening and making sure we are doing the right things across the county. One of the things we decided to do last year, once we had five of us in place, and I'm sure you know many of the other Commissioners, or probably all of them, we come from, many of us come from city backgrounds. Anne Leininger is one of the newest ones, who came from a nonprofit background with the Meyer Memorial Trust. So she has some different experiences that she brings to the table. So we all have different areas of expertise, but we're all trying to work across barriers to ensure that we accomplish our goals. So I noticed, looking over to my left, that your council has six nicely worded goals. And as I looked over our goals again this afternoon before coming down here, I thought, wow, what a lengthy list. And so it was really our first attempt with five of us, trying to figure out how to characterize major areas of involvement. And if you turn the page, we also have an update that was done probably very early fall of last year. So we have made progress towards these goals. We didn't really have these fully established until probably, oh, about April, even probably closer to May of last year. So even with that, we did make quite a bit of progress. And as we look towards goal-setting in a couple of weeks for this year, we will probably try to, and my goal would be to focus a little bit more and try to re-characterize these, so that we have maybe four or five major areas and probably have subcategories. But let me just highlight a couple of the things that I think were really important for us. The county established what's called an alternate work week for many of our employees, working four 10-hour days. That is continuing into the future. So with one year of experience, some of the, some of what we've seen, and one of the important pieces would be the savings of about a half a million dollars in general fund money. And I'll repeat, that's general fund money. So very scarce to come across these days. So I think that's going to help us quite a bit. We haven't seen any decline in productivity. We think that the additional hours that the buildings up on the hill are open during the day. People have adapted to that. So we've done little surveys, and we think we're on the right track there. So others are looking at our work schedule and trying to emulate what the county has done. This, of course, doesn't include, you know, folks like in the public safety arena, because they have to be available 24/7. But for those folks who are handling permitting, well, I could talk about permitting, and that's dropped quite a bit because of the economy at the moment. But for the most part, we've seemed to accommodate most all of the needs. So we're looking at that, and we'll refine and fine-tune things if we need to. Another important piece was being able to garner about $15 million of stimulus funding from the federal government. We wished we could get a little bit more than that, but we've tried to at least go after dollars that would provide jobs. So many of the dollars came through what would have been a standard funding formula to the state and then distributed back out to the counties. So we've tried to do work along the lines of transportation, energy efficiency type of work, enhancing public safety a bit, and helping to bolster those human services that we probably would have lost otherwise if we didn't have the federal stimulus coming in. So we're looking at maybe about 200 jobs there, maybe plus or minus a little bit. So we're still waiting for the results of some of the other requests we have out there. We've been looking for some broadband money, so that we could expand that area around the county, especially through the rural areas of the county. So we have about a $5 million request still outstanding there. So let me just hop over to some of the other pieces. We're looking, and this probably isn't highlighted here as well as it should be, but we're still looking at what people understood the Sunrise Corridor to be many, many years ago. When I first came to Oregon almost 22 years ago, I remember reading about it in the Oregonian, that this is the new up-and-coming big project that we would see in place within the next five years. Well, it's been a long time coming, and so it's been phased back or trimmed to the point where we're looking at some of the important intersection improvements that we'd like to see over the next, next couple of few years. So we're looking at maybe about a $130 million project there. That's mostly state money with some other county and federal funding thrown in. But a rather much smaller project, at least in its initial phases, but it hopefully will accomplish and solve some of the major intersection problems. Anybody who's driven the 224, joining Highway 205 during certain times of the day, almost any time of the day at times, it's really a difficult area. So if we can make some of those improvements and get our truck traffic through the industrial park and our residents as well, that'll help us quite a bit. And again, one of the other things we're trying to do is to be sustainable. We're trying to enact a sustainability plan that cuts across all of our departments, so that people aren't working within silos, working together on issues, and working very creatively and efficiently. And let me just touch on, what we'd like to do this year is to begin work on what we're calling a five-year strategic plan. A lot of us have come from different entities, and the agency that I came from before I retired, from Bonner the Power, we had some really interesting ways of planning in terms of strategic plans. And I think if we can take what I've learned there and what others have learned in their careers too, to figure out maybe a better way to look at a longer-term planning structure for the county, that's what we'd love to do. Rather than coming up with a new list of goals every year and having things maybe a little bit more focused into the future. So that's sort of our goal this year, is to try to come up with the, we'll start with the outline of the plan, and hopefully by mid-year have something in place that we can look at over the next five-year period. So our goal is to focus and try to do as much as we can with some of the limited resources we have. We've been watching for some of the economic improvements that we're hoping to see this year. We know that housing usually helps us recover from a recession. We haven't seen any changes in that arena at the moment. There seems to be such a big supply at the moment. So we're looking for any areas where we can helpfully, or excuse me, help some of our businesses continue to be strong and also to grow. So we're working with our legislators. We're putting together our federal package when we go back to DC. We'll try to focus our needs in terms of whether it's public safety or we're helping those that are most vulnerable in the communities that need assistance. So we'll try to bring things together and stay focused. So what I want to do is maybe stop there. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I wanted to give ample time for questions or anything else you would want to know about the county. So, thank you.
We had our Metro Council here talking about specifically urban and rural reserves. One thing that concerned me, and actually, we took a different stance at the city level, and that was the inclusion of areas in the urban reserve that could not be urbanized, and I'm thinking specifically about New Oak Creek Canyon. As you go forward through this urban reserve process, I would like the Corps Forward to come up with mechanisms of dealing with this issue, because I don't think we can fairly annex property into the city. And we're not going to provide urban services to. So I'd like some kind of guidance, because I don't think New Oak Creek Canyon is the only one. I think there's areas in the West Hills of Portland, for example, where this issue's coming up as well. How do we, how do we deal with that kind of issue?
That is one process that I didn't mention in my short report, but I think a lot of us have been to many of the meetings. There will be additional chances and opportunities for testimony with many public hearings and open houses over the next several weeks. So we still have some hard decisions to make, and it's a totally different process than what has been tried before. So trying to work within a three-county structure along with Metro to figure out what are our needs over the next 40 to 50 years. It's, I don't think anybody else across the country has tried something like this. I think eyes are focused on us to see how well we can protect farmland and look for ways to make sure we have enough land for important business development as well as housing needs. And along with that is, how do you provide the transportation and all the infrastructure? How do you pay for it over time? And granted, it's a longer time period, and we still have lots of issues to deal with in terms of which portions come in within Clackamas County. We have some preliminary recommendations that we've agreed to as a commission a few months ago. We'll probably continue to refine those. I know that Commissioner Lehan has been sort of the carrying the weight for us, and we meet at least weekly. And we are, no matter what you read in the papers, we are together on these issues. They're very difficult ones. And we're just, we're thrilled to be getting closer to the end of the process. Let me just say that. And I'm happy to hear additional comments. And again, lots of opportunity for, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but it is out there on the Metro website. So lots of opportunities there. Difficult process, but probably very worthwhile for us to be going through. Well, actually, it looks like we are making some progress there too. So I will say much more about it, but hopefully with, with the new advisory committee, we can make some progress. So.
Thank you very much for the update.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate you being here. And anytime anyone wants to stop up at the top of the hill and visit with us, please do so. So, thank you again.
The next items that have to happen at the first meeting of any year are some housekeeping items. And it's different this year, because it's not, not, we don't have, don't have any changes on the commission, but we do every year annually elect a commission president. So at this time, nominations are now open for the position of commission president. This is the.
And Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner West.
I would like to nominate Doug Neely for commission president for 2010.
Doug Neely's been nominated for commission president. Are there any other nominations? Not all those in favor of electing Commissioner Neely as commission president? Say aye.
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 Oppose? Oppose, same sign? Commissioner Neely is elected commission president. Okay. This is a person who, you know, if I can't attend a meeting, I turn to the commission president, and then if he can't, I ask other people. If I'm unable to lead a meeting, then he would lead in my stead. So look forward to the partnership. Next. You have a question? Yes, Commissioner Smith.
I'll see you on there.
Well, there you go.
There you are.
My question is, were business cards printed for the commission president today or prior to today? Because I hope they were not.
We'll ask our city recorder.
Okay, thank you. Last year, business cards were printed before the vote, and so I hope that didn't happen this year.
No, that did not happen, and I did print them last year with, by a guess only.
A guess?
A guess. And no business cards were not printed for the commission president this year.
Now we can proceed with the printing. I would like to.
I've got, I've got a whole bunch of city commission cards. And I necessarily really feels it's necessary. I mean, I can hand out the card and tell them I'm also.
You can get a stamp, a stamp.
Yeah, I can put a stamp.
Yeah.
I wouldn't bother.
That's up to you. Okay, next, I'd like to move into the committee assignments. We each sit on several committees or other liaisons to various other organizational bodies in the, in the region. And we really only have one change this year. I'll go through the whole list too. But for the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, which is C4, Daphne West will be the lead, that'll be the member, and Commissioner Doug Neely will be the alternate on that. The meeting's actually tomorrow night. I will go since I'm the sitting chair, so I have to open the meeting, and then we'll transition after the election. So I think that you and Commissioner West can't, cannot attend. Is that correct?
You both cannot attend, that's true.
Yeah, okay. I'll do the cover for you. And then just to review all of the other assignments that we have. AMPAC, which is Metro Policy Advisory Committee, which is Metro's land use committee. I'm the member, and Commissioner Neely is the alternate. South Fork Water Board, there are three of us that sit as voting members, along with three members from the Westland City Council. And that will be Commissioner West, Commissioner Smith, and myself. J-PAC, which is the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, which is the Metro Regional Transportation Committee, that gives out money and determines the transportation priorities. I am the alternate in the county, representing the cities of Clackamas County. South Metro Light Rail Committee, I will continue to sit on that. Regional Wastewater Advisory Committee, I will sit on that one as it moves into its formative times. The Main Street Board Liaison is Commissioner West. She'll continue with that. Lamont Falls Heritage Area Coalition, Commissioner West and I will continue with that. Economic Development Liaisons, Commissioner West and I will continue with that. The Oregon City Tourism Council, Commissioner West, Commissioner Smith, and myself will work on that. Commissioner Neely is on two additional committees. One is the Committee on Determination of the Future of the Kellogg. On Holcombe, and so she serves as liaison to that board as well, and I feel to put you on that, Commissioner West. So with that, let's move on to, it's a walk-on presentation that we somehow overlooked scheduling this evening, but I would like Nancy Walters. Thank you, I blanked underneath. Nancy Walters to come forward along with Trell Anderson. Welcome to the City Council, City Commission meeting, and we're eager to hear about this exciting project. It's just getting rolling.
That's right. Thank you.
Hello, thanks. Apologize for the confusion. We were.
No problem. Glad to have you here.
Systematic comments, but I'm also very glad to be here tonight, and thank you for your attention this evening. I'm representing Park Place Neighborhood Association. I'm the newly elected chair. And also, I'm on the, I'm a co-chair, serving with Clackamas County Commissioner Anne Leininger for the Clackamas Housing Authority of Clackamas County redevelopment effort for the Clackamas Heights property. The Clackamas Heights property is one of two that are in the Park Place neighborhood. Each is 20 acres, and there's 100 housing units on each of the sites. And Clackamas Housing Authority has undertaken an effort to redevelop the lower property, Clackamas Heights. So that property was built in 1940, and they're, well, very well-maintained. They have lived past their useful life, and we're very excited that this is a really wonderful opportunity for the community as well as the residents. And so we wanted to give you an update and also tell you about some things that are coming up that we think are pretty exciting. HACC has hired a master planning team led by the architectural firm Methune to identify preferred redevelopment options to enhance livability, community amenities, accessibility, and energy efficiency to the 20-acre site. Methune will produce a concept plan that will be submitted to HUD as part of a HOPE 6 revitalization grant sometime in the fall of 2010. One of the focuses of this effort is to build community partnerships between residents of Clackamas Heights, Park Place Neighborhood Association, and the larger community. The public engagement program includes the project advisory group, of which I'm the co-chair. Daphne West has been representing the commission. We have Lieutenant Lisa Nunes from the Police Department, and Christina Robertson Gardner representing the Planning Division. And we've engaged in a series of community meetings and tours, community design workshops, stakeholder interviews. There's a project website, and information is posted at Public Kiosk at the Clackamas Heights property on Steve's Market. Tonight, we have a short video. Not sure if it's available. Not going to be available tonight.
Not yet.
Okay. Well, at any rate, there is an interesting video that was produced as part of this effort. It's a cultural audit that was performed by one of the Methune consultants. And it's really quite a neat snapshot of the community with regard to heritage and culture, demographics and trends. That video is also available on the project website. So if anyone's interested in seeing it, I would encourage you. It's just a four-minute video. And I think it really does capture the community spirit.
What is the website?
It's the Housing Authority website, which is under the county website. And you'll find a, on the left-hand column, you'll find a project page.
Let's see. The project team has also developed a series of project goals that will divide, that will guide the redevelopment process. And those goals aim to benefit the entire Park Place community through an open public engagement process. During the week of January 16 through 23, HACC is hosting a series of events to provide opportunities for public involvement to help Methune develop a design concept that best fits the site and the community. These events include an open house, design training, and a design workshop, drop-in sessions, where the public can watch the team work on designs. At the end of the week, the project team will develop conceptual designs. We want to encourage everyone to participate in these events. Food and childcare will be provided at several evening sessions. And schedules and other project information are available at the project website. And in closing, I'd like to acknowledge the City of Oregon City for supporting this effort, especially Commissioner Daphne West, the Planning Division, and the Police Department. And I'd also like to thank all the many individuals who have participated in making this a real partnership, especially Trell Anderson for his leadership in facilitating this community development initiative. Thank you.
At this point, the only thing I would add is that the schedule in front of you is kind of the pinnacle of our community engagement process. You see, there's five very active days, starting on Saturday, the 16th. That includes a tour of a redevelopment project that the Housing Authority of Portland did in North Portland called New Columbia. Little bit different scale. There's 80 acres there. We're looking at 20 acres. But in terms of the build-out and the housing type, it's very similar to what you could pretty easily imagine at the Clackamas Heights site. So if you don't have anything to do on Saturday, please join us. We have a bus that will be leaving from the site, I think at 12:30 or 1 o'clock. And we'll try to get people back in time for dinner. And then we have design workshops, and we would just greatly appreciate you attending. There's drop-in opportunities, as well as community forums, as well as just promoting this throughout the community, so that we can get as much input and broad participation as possible.
Great. An exciting process. Any questions from Commissioners?
If you want to give it a try, I think we might be able to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure, let's give it a try.
This is actually right here.
Come up on ours, Nancy.
We'll pass. I don't want to, I don't, I don't know if it's got the right program for this.
Okay, well, we'll check it out on the website. That's easy enough to do.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for the update. That concludes our second time ceremonies, proclamations, and presentation. We'll move into citizen comments. I don't have any comments yet. Any requests? Thank you. If you would come up together, please, Vicky Yates and William Gifford. For the citizen comment, we ask that you state your name and city in which you live, and then you may speak up to three minutes. You have a timer here, so you can self-monitor. Hi, welcome.
Vicky Yates, Oregon City. I wanted to share with you a low-cost, low-tech pedestrian safety measure that my husband and I saw last week in Salt Lake City that we think might work in Oregon City. And if I may, I have a few pictures. The pictures are all different, but as you'll be able to see, we were on South Temple Street, which is a main drag, right across the street from the Governor's Mansion. There was no stop sign. There was a crosswalk. There was no traffic light. And in order to get across the street more safely, there was a simple metal pole with a PVC container, or a rubber container, holding little like crossing flags, like your street crossing guard would have. Just a simple metal, oh, excuse me, wooden dowel with an orange flag. And those, I apologize, they're black and white pictures, but they were orange flags. Some of them had holes in the middle, so the wind wouldn't push them around. Some of them had reflective tape on them. And there's a sign, as you can see from the photos, that says, "Look left and right when you cross, but if you want to be seen better, for better visibility, hold the flags up." They worked amazingly well. We took one of the flags, and the traffic immediately came to a halt. And I can think of a lot of intersections here that that would work for. The only downside I see is pranksters and kids might run off with the flags, but they seem to be so inexpensive to produce, I think it's worth looking into. So that's just for your information.
Great. We can pass the House of Traffic Advisory Committee, and certainly we can contact Salt Lake City. Thank you very much. I think we have the newly elected administrators of the CIC.
As a matter of fact, Madam Mayor and City Councilors, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. Tom Guile in Park Place Neighborhood.
Also Oregon City.
Yes.
And we just wanted to report that Monday night at the CIC, that's the Citizen Involvement Council, meaning we had our first reelections, actually. That we have a new chair, and Mr. Guile, Tom Guile, was elected as Chair of the CIC. We have a new vice chair. Vice Chair is Betty Mum, who is also the Chair of the Barkley Hills Neighborhood Association, and I was re-elected. Well, actually, my term continued as Secretary of the CIC. And that's basically what we wanted to report, and Mr. Guile had a couple of words to say.
Oh, thank you. Simply wanted to let all the neighborhoods know that we have meetings every first Monday of each month, and all neighborhoods are invited to attend. Anybody who would like to hear what's going on in their neighborhoods. There's so many people who don't even know that they have a neighborhood association, let alone that there's a CIC, Citizens Involvement Council. So we encourage all the neighbors to participate and drop in at any one of those meetings. Monday night, we had an exciting meeting, where it was standing room only. So there's always something exciting to discuss, and we'd like all our neighbors to participate. That's it.
And speaking of meetings, tomorrow night, the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association will be having its general meeting, where we will be re-electing, will we, we will, officers. I hope that's on tape, yes, some of the officers. And I will be stepping down as Chair after two years. Because I no longer live in, however, it was pointed out to me that there's nothing in the bylaws that requires any officer or any member of the Neighborhood Association to actually reside in the neighborhood. All you have to do is have an interest in the neighborhood, read the bylaws. However, I will be stepping down as Chair. And I am now a resident. And I am now a resident of the Hillendale Neighborhood Association, and to continue my eligibility as Secretary for the CIC, I will be the representative of Hillendale Association through the CIC, and we'll see what we can do about getting Hillendale reactivated as well.
Thank you.
Have a good year.
Thank you.
Oh, happy 12th Day of Christmas.
Did I? I said you had the chair this morning.
Yes, I did.
No, 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 I believe that wasn't the 12th Day yesterday.
I think it's today.
It was today, oh, okay.
Looking at the agenda, is there anything that anyone wishes to have pulled for separate consideration or rearrange on the agenda? Seeing none, then, we will take the agenda in the order in which it appears. The first thing that we have is a public hearing item. This is a land use, a quasi-judicial land use hearing, which requires us to follow the rules of the State of Oregon and the regulations of our municipal code. This is an annexation, A N 0901, and I will ask our city attorney to lead us through the legal requirements for this hearing.
Really, thank you, Madam Mayor. There was a staff report prepared for this and made available to the public seven days before the hearing that listed the applicable substantive criteria. If anybody needs me to read those, please let me know. All testimony, arguments, and evidence should be directed toward those criteria in the staff report or to those criteria regulations that the person testifying believes apply to this application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city commission, and the parties' opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. And in addition, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. With that, I'll ask the commissioners if they have any bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte contacts that they wish to declare at this time. Seeing none, are there any challenges to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the members of the commission to participate? Seeing none, I believe it's back to you.
The rules of the hearing then will be as normally outlined, which will be that we will begin with the applicant presenting the, no, the city will go first.
The staff report first.
The staff report will have it first for in 10 minutes or less. The applicant then will have an opportunity to present their case for 10 minutes or less. And the citizens will, well, we've opened the public hearing, the citizens will have an opportunity to respond for three minutes each, and neighborhood associations, I believe, have 10 minutes.
10 minutes is correct.
Then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, close the public hearing, and the commission will begin deliberations. This is an annexation, so it will require a positive vote by the commission to go through the ballot. So with that, Tony, would you like to begin the staff report? Tony Conkle, our Community Development Director.
Thank you.
New title.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So I'll be presenting Annexation 0901 tonight. The request was made by the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Bauer of 19921 County Court, to annex in approximately .55 acres of property down just north of Glen Oak Road and south of Myers Road by the Oregon City High School. Property is identified as 3 South, 2 East, 9 DD Tax Lot 3400. This is what we would consider a county island. It was identified in 2001 when we did our city island annexations, but as part of the ordinance, the actual property description was not included, so it was left off, so this is somewhat of a cleanup. As you may recall, the Bowers did come in front of this commission and requested some free waivers, which were granted. As part of ordinance 011034, which is the island annexation, one of the issues that was identified was the need to annex the islands to improve delivery of service and provide in a more efficient and equitable manner, as well as address confusion such as police protection and code enforcement issues for those county islands. The property is surrounded on four sides by properties within the city. To the south, the properties are zoned R10. To the east, the property is zoned R3.5. To the north and west, the properties are zoned R6. This property has a comprehensive plan designation of medium-density residential, which means it will come in as R5, single-family dwelling unit. At .55 acres, you could mathematically, approximately three to four lots, if the property owners did decide to partition or subdivide that property at some date in the future. It's currently vacant, flat, there are no overlay districts, water resource, natural hazards located on the property, no historic designations on the property. The one, part of, the property is landlocked, meaning it does not have any access to a public right-of-way. That would need to be addressed at time of future partitioning of that property. What the Oregon City Municipal Code requires is that any lot that's created needs to have access on a public right-of-way, so you'd be looking at some type of a flaglot configuration, most likely to provide access to those lots in the back, if the property owners ever did decide to do something with that property. The property is currently not served with water or sanitary sewer, although water, sanitary sewer, and storm drains is available, either in County Court, Glen Oak Road, Myers Road, or Beaver Creek, there's actually adequate public infrastructure facilities completely surrounding the property, and it could be extended to serve it at some future date if so desired by the property owners. Part of the annexation requirement is addressing the criteria, six criteria from Metro. Through the staff report, I've gone through, and I identified what those criteria are, and demonstrated that the proposed annexation can meet those criteria. There is no annexation, no annexation plan for this property or this area of Oregon City. The city commission, and I've provided this in the reasons for approval and findings, is that we must concur with a separate annexation into the Tri-City Service District. It's become a two-step process. We used to be able to annex them into the Tri-City Service District when this annexation was approved by the voters. It's become a two-step process, so Tri-Cities would do their own annexation process, and we, through this findings and approval, would be indicating that we concur and support annexing this property to that district. It's already in Clackamas County Fire Protection District, so there's no action needed there. And upon annexation, we'll automatically be able to remove them from Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District, and police service will be provided by the Oregon City Police Department. With the recent acquisitions of additional police officers, our actual police to population has improved up to 1.27 per thousand residents, 1.27 officers per thousand. Metro criteria also requires that we comply with Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan. It does that. Clackamas County adopts our Comprehensive Plan every time we update it. Clackamas County is a little bit behind in updating their plan, but we do have an updated Comprehensive Plan that identifies the property as medium-density residential. We also have an urban growth money management agreement with Clackamas County, which says they will implement our Comprehensive Plan, and that we address public utilities, which have been addressed, there are adequate public utilities in the area, and that we provide notice to the county, which we did, is one of the required requirements of this application. We did not identify anything that would interfere with the timely, orderly, or economic, economics of the public services to the area by annexing this property. Oregon City Municipal Code identifies the need to provide adequate access to the site. You have access via County Court to Glen Oak Road, which then goes to Beaver Creek Road or Highway 213, so there is adequate transportation available to the site. As I did discuss earlier, it is landlocked, but that can be accommodated through a future land partition or easements to access that rear property. The property owners who brought this annexation in are actually own the property directly south of the subject site, that have access on County Court. The Oregon City Comprehensive Plan discusses the need to make sure that we don't annex properties that are cherry stems. Obviously, this is not, and that we do not create additional county islands. We will actually be remedying that situation in this case. ORS 222 requires that the property be contiguous to city limits. That is being met. And as I said earlier, there's no hazardous overlays on the property, scenic, historical, cultural, or open space designations on the property. There is transportation, public transportation located at Clackamas Community College, approximately .75 miles away from the subject site. The nearest developed park is Hillendale, approximately two miles away. Oregon City High School is directly north of the site, and then we've actually, about a half a mile to the west of the site, we've recently acquired some additional city property for a potential park use on Glen Oak Road down the street from this site. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and reviewed this application. They unanimously recommended to you approval of the application by a 4-0 vote, and that it should be placed on the May 18, 2010 ballot for consideration by the citizens of Oregon City. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
I just have one. It said that the draft planning commissions were to be provided.
Yes.
They're on your screen, the very last attachment, the last excerpt.
Ballot title.
1214.
Ooh, there's more down there. I didn't see that that went on.
It was a, it was a late walk-on by me this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
I pretty much gave the same presentation to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Lejois asked about the zoning around the properties, being that we had R10 to the south, R3.5 to the east, and R6 to the north and to the west, and if staff had any concerns about this being compatible with that. It seems to be very compatible. You're talking, R5 is a 5,000-square-foot lot, would be compatible with the R6 to the north, the R10s to the south. It does seem appropriate. The other, they did ask if there are other islands in the city. There is one other island that was just recently created, I believe, last year. There were no other concerns raised by the Planning Commission, and then a motion was made to approve and recommend to you.
Thank you for the review. If there are no questions, so.
No questions.
Quit. Yeah, I find out here.
It's really a.
Commissioner Neely.
It's really an academic question, since they do own that island, but, I mean, they do own the adjacent property. But if we had such an island, and there were more property owners that were willing to create an easement, what would happen? I mean, could the city, could the city, by right of imminent knowing or something, take somebody's property just to provide a road to?
There's actually something, sorry, there is a provision that allows people to have what's known as a way of necessity, that allows people to have access to landlocked properties. It's a court proceeding, and the person who owns a property has to pay just compensation to wherever the road ends up going, and there's certain criteria that courts look at, but they will be allowed access in some ways. I think you're right that in this case, it's academic because they own the adjacent property, but there are provisions to remedy that.
Any questions before we move into the public hearing?
Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner West.
This is actually for Tony. So do the owners of the subject site live at 19921? If they can access through there, what's the house number that they live on, on County Court?
Yes, it is 19921 County Court. It's directly south of the island that's being annexed.
And so if this comes in, did you say at an R5, that would be, the subject site would be, could accommodate a partition of up to three to four houses?
Mathematically, yes.
That looks reasonable for the area there, to me. Thank you.
Ready for the public hearing? All right, I will open the public hearing. Now, the applicant has an opportunity to talk for 10 minutes.
Mr. and Mrs. Bauer did call me. They're unfortunately out of the city on state tonight, so they would not be able to attend.
There's no one here on their behalf?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Are there any citizens who have come prepared to testify this evening? Is there anyone who has a rebuttal? I guess not. So I will close the public hearing, seeing that we have no testimony, and now it's opportunity for the commission to deliberate. Seems fairly straightforward. There's no comments, then, we have a motion.
We'll move to Resolution Number 0936.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nacita. Is there further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. So the annexation will move to the May 18 ballot. Next, we have, under General Business, the adoption of findings of fact for the public works facility that we, a second here, back up to it. The McLaughlin Neighborhood Appeal and the City Commission call up of the Planning Commission approval. We discussed several additional changes to the finding of fact in final order last meeting. Those are before us now in the staff memo. Do any commissioners have any response, or do you want to outline what those changes were, Mr. Conkle?
I could go through that very quickly.
Sure, I don't need to do that quickly.
Attachment 2 to the commission report that was provided to you dated December 24, 2009, we tried to outline the changes that were made in response to the recommendations of the commission at our last meeting concerning the applicability of ORS 227.173. We removed the last, part of the last sentence concerning that it would be redundant. Concerning the white oaks on the site, we, the findings on page 20, we tried and to require the applicant to provide an alternative site plan for the upper yard. They tried to save all or a portion of the basalt rock outcropping up there and the white oaks that are up there. As part of that alternative site plan, they would also be looking at the equipment that would be needed to get into that yard, and if that can be accommodated, the turning radiuses, movements, backing, as well as pedestrian connectivity back and forth through there, it can be accommodated safely while maintaining some or all of those outcroppings. So that would be an alternative site plan that would be submitted at the time of the detailed development plan at a later date, as well as a site plan showing all of the trees and the outcroppings removed. We're trying to give some standards for staff to use when they were reviewing that, so that we had something to utilize in that review. Concerning the noise study, we added that the Community Development Department would be conducting the noise study without contacting the Public Works Department, or when that would occur. And then the Historic Review Board, we left in Conditions 6, 7, 8, and 9, but added that they have been deleted by this commission, but we've left them in for future reference. And we believe we've clarified that they are not applicable, and that Condition of Approval 28, which requires that Historic Review Board and coordination with State Historic Preservation Office shall occur for all development and demolition on that site. We believe that those address the concerns that were raised by the commission. I am requesting one additional minor change for Condition of Approval Number 1. It currently raises that the applicant shall complete the South Center Street improvements for the east half of South Center Street as part of the Phase 2 development of the site. The improvements in Phase 3 shall be deleted from the plan. If I could, I'd like to change the "the" at the beginning of the second sentence to "these," and so that we're not deleting all of the Phase 3 improvements, we're moving the improvements for South Center Street to Phase 2 rather than a Phase 3. So "these" is referring to South Center Street.
Could you read it again, since we don't have it, with the change?
Sure. The changed version is, "The applicant shall complete the South Center Street improvements for the east half of South Center Street as part of the Phase 2 development of the site. These improvements in Phase 3 shall be deleted from the plan," instead of "the" improvements. So we're just trying to clarify that it's a single thing that we're moving from Phase 3.
Okay. Commissioners, did these capture what you, our conversation of last meeting? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Smith?
I, I do agree with the most recent changes, but I still have concerns with a lot of the findings, and will be consistent with my vote, my original vote.
I think, I'll tell you with my cellphone, I see me on the screen, but I don't know where I got it.
I don't see you, but I can call on you anyway, Commissioner Neely.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll flip up with some other action item. It, it, probably a couple of minor things. Two C, and maybe, maybe it's not an issue, it says, if monitoring.
On, on which document?
Oh, excuse me, the adopted City Commission, the adopted City Commission.
Master.
Conditions and approval.
Okay.
It's on page 22. And two C, it says, if monitoring exceeds, do we mean if monitored nears level exceeds?
That's probably a better way to, to state it.
Okay. I would suggest that as a minor thing. I would like on conditions of approval, page 25, when we're talking about the, the potential of mitigation for a tree is being removed, this is the last sentence under 31, "The trees may be placed on site if practical."
Replaced.
Replaced on site if practical, but may be planted off-site. I would like to insert "in a suitable habitat for white oak," because there aren't any habitats that are really suitable here in Oregon City. So I would like to insert "in a suitable habitat for white oak after planted off-site."
Any objections to that addition? Okay.
Mayor Jack?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Thank you, Doug, for that amendment on, on that language change there. I was trying to think of the same thing, that it'd be nice to have the, where to have those oaks, and I thought, I'm not the expert on where they should go, so that was, that's a good way of saying that. Can I bring up one, one condition that I was concerned on? At the time?
Yes, please go ahead.
Um, I'm here, I'm looking on my paper. Mine was on page 22, I believe, of the same document, and it was, I believe, condition 28, the, no, 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 I'm sorry, page 22, and condition five, when we were talking about the staircase from the building, let's see, I'm going to try to put it up here.
No, we don't have that, so you'll have to read that to us.
Actually, attachment A to the document.
The pedestrian staircase providing direct access to the trailhead prior to the issuance of an occupancy, occupancy permit for the Phase Two development, if not completed sooner. Well, since we had kind of changed the language, that there might be a different design than what the one that currently was, I thought, is this a, a necessary condition of approval in there?
That's a good question.
Go ahead. Yes, please.
I believe, I believe it is. It's, it's dealing with separate of the building, providing us an access from Center Street up the, up the bluff somehow, to the new trailhead that's going to be created, the new trail that's connecting into a waterboard park.
Okay.
This condition regardless of what the building looks, may look like, or, correct?
It is correct, yes.
You didn't see him nodding his head?
Thank you.
Now watching.
Any additional comments and, or points on this? Okay. Then may I have a motion on this? Oh, okay, let me find you. I see it on yours. So Commissioner Nacita?
I wanted to thank the staff for these language amendments, and I have, I will concur with Commissioner Smith. While I appreciate the changes, working with the commission to, to wrap this up, I will be voted this decision.
Commissioner Neely?
In that case, I will move for the adoptions of the findings of fact of the Neighborhood Association appeal and the City Commission call-up of the county commissions, August 13th, 2009, we will, conditions of the Public Works plans, if master plan, as we've amended.
Clarification, actually.
Yes, Commissioner Nacita?
Are we voting just on the language of the findings, or, because we didn't make a final decision last month?
Right.
So I'm wondering if we should be voting in the same terms that we originally voted, i.e., whether we're approving or denying the appeal to MacGuffin Neighborhood Association? How should the, yeah, if we're making the final decision now, how should we word what we're voting on?
I mean, the final decision is now. What was done in early December was a tentative decision and go back and develop findings.
Okay.
I, I wasn't able to hear the, the wording of Commissioner Neely.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to make it clear whether a yes vote is, is denying the appeal, or whether a yes vote is approving the appeal, or sustaining the appeal.
Certainly, depending on the language of the motion, but I would.
It was the action that's suggested here.
Okay.
In the text.
Adopting the finding of fact.
Yes.
Then, yeah, it would be denying the appeal.
So if I want to sustain the appeal, I should vote?
No.
No. That is correct.
We do not have a second yet, so.
No, just, just for clarification purposes, we made changes based on that appeal, but, but, but basically, I read what was here, and then, as, I think I said, as, as has been amended by the City Commission.
So adopting the approval conditions and the language that we changed this evening as well. Okay, may I have a second, please?
Another clarification.
Nacita?
They did make some changes.
Here's the issue. I assume the language changes, so I think there's actually two votes.
No.
Because if I vote no, then I'm voting against the language changes that I approve of.
I would, I think, actually, if we, if we, if we had a consensus on the changes in the language, I think, or even if we don't have a consensus, if we have a different set of votes based on the changes in the language, and then, then the actual adoption. Now, what, I would suggest you pose the, what you feel is appropriate motion for the change of the language. And I'll just redraw my motion for the moment and make it after you've done.
Well, what, read yours again, because it sounds to me that your, your wording satisfies me as far as the word change.
Well, accept it.
But it doesn't satisfy as, as a, as a final decision as to whether we're approving or denying the appeal.
But the findings of a fact, of fact, outline the conditions, outline that, that approval because of the changes that we made.
I think, I'm going to simplify this, because if I vote no, it will still have the wording that I approve of.
Yes, it will.
Why don't you make, why don't you?
Right. I'll, I'll second.
Yeah, it's very simple. It's, it's very simple, because all of the things that we have in the ball wax are, are on the table, so. Okay, moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nacita for the adoption of the findings of fact. Are there any further comment or clarification needed before we vote?
Yes, I, I, with, people not speaking directly into the mic as I can't hear everything, so tell me what a yes or a no vote means on this particular motion?
A yes vote means that you will, that you wish to adopt the findings of fact and the, with the conditions that we've added, and the wording that we've added tonight, and that you deny the appeal. And no vote means that you deny, that you continue to approve the appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Ready for the vote? Do you need a clarification?
Not clarification as much as I'm getting the signals from the room that he's having trouble picking up some of the commissioners' discussion.
Tell us who is, who, what, who is, who's the problem?
I'm sorry.
Who needs to be closer to the mic, or whatever?
It seems like all the microphones are shifted over one spot, so neither, neither microphone.
Oh, I wonder. Ah. Well, I asked that. I. Okay, that's, that's. Okay, I noticed that Earl is using different mics.
Wait, this is mine?
That's mine.
Why would she make mine work?
That's to the left.
This one is for this chair.
Yes.
And this is yours.
That's me. Oh, you, okay. Yes, okay. Are we okay now? All right. Now, did that interruption cause you to misunderstand where we're going here? Okay, do we all understand where we're voting? Any more clarifications needed?
Well, did, did Commissioner West understand what it was now?
She said she did.
Okay.
Okay, Nancy.
A yes vote means that I, we deny the appeal from the Neighborhood Association and support the Public Works plan.
We're to memorize.
All right, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nacita?
No.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes three two. Okay. Next, we move into general business, our, it'll be the second item in general business. And that is a personal service, personal services agreement with Brandon Caldwell for professional services associated with our MS4 National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Renewal and Updates to the City's Stormwater Management Plan. For the staff reported, appears we have John Lewis, our Operations Manager for Public Works.
Good evening.
Good evening, John.
Did I actually miss the whole, I stepped out in the middle?
Yeah, you did.
Oh, my gosh, how does that happen?
Congratulations.
I was talking city business, if that matters at all. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm here tonight as a representative for Public Works to ask from you for authorization to award a personal services contract to Brandon Caldwell in the amount of $50,231. Brandon Caldwell is one of the consultants who was shortlisted in our last selection process. Yes, we would like to utilize Brandon Caldwell's professional services to assist the city in negotiating our MS4 permit, and for those of you that don't know what the MS4 stands for, it's Municipal Separated Stormwater System Permit. We have one now that's expired, it's been expired for a while.
Or almost.
It's still in effect, though.
Still in effect. We're still following it, but we're working through with DEQ. DEQ's been working with all the Phase One permit holders, which includes Portland, Clean Water Services, Gresham, Salem, Eugene, O'Dea, and Clackamas County. And it's significantly different than what we have seen in the past. And so we would, we need the help of Brandon Caldwell to help us through some of those permit negotiations. As described in the City Commission report, Oregon City has, has traditionally been a co-permity with several other jurisdictions from Clackamas County, and this permit will be specific to Oregon City. So we will be a permity, not a co-permity, yet we will continue to work with all those other agencies in similar kind of fashion as we have. If I could just take a little bit of time to discuss our program, because I think it tends to get overlooked a little bit, we do.
Interesting.
A fair amount of work related to stormwater in this city, and a lot of that's permit required, a lot of it just common sense that makes sense, but we do anything from catch basin cleaning to street sweeping to monitoring and managing our stormwater quality facilities. We build new facilities like the, the low-impact development kinds of things that we see on Bubba Creek Road, that we're going to see at the intersection of Warner Melney and Malala. Public education, monitoring, there's, there's a lot of things that, if you're interested and haven't seen, are published in an annual report that's on the web. And there's other stormwater-related documents that are a requirement of our current MS4 permit that are on the web as well. So I think it's good reading. I don't know if you'll agree with me.
You have a different perspective than where, but would you?
Maybe, maybe. Staff from Brandon Caldwell have a very strong understanding of the permit discussions that are going on with DEQ right now. They understand what other agencies are, are doing in response to some of the discussions about where the permit language should go. They have done a lot of work for us. They help us put together the annual stormwater permit, I mean, annual stormwater report. They have helped us with our surface water management plan, which is the tool that we kind of use to implement these practices and document the work that we've done. They helped us with a coordinated stormwater monitoring plan that we do with other Clackamas County agencies to kind of combine our efforts so that we're not all trying to focus our, our monitoring on maybe just a residential kind of a district we might, you know, for instance, we do it from a commercial, we've got a commercial outfall that we, we monitor. They may have a residential area, but we've, we've kind of combined that effort, so hopefully collectively, we put together a much better plan and, and get much better statistics at the end of that plan. And because we're the only Phase One community that has multiple jurisdictions in it, and, you know, we all have a little bit of input, different funding, different approval processes, it's kind, it's, it's amazing that it works, but it worked out pretty well for us. So, anyway, Brandon Caldwell's fairly familiar with our existing program and familiar with others. Our past work with Brandon Caldwell is advantageous because of the past permit language and the new permit language. And again, their familiarity with, with what the other Phase One communities are doing. Let's see, for, the thing that they've done for us is that they've, they've kind of become a facilitator for discussions about how we as co-permittees, even though we all have our own separate permits, will address some of these pretty significant changes in the new permit that we fully expect DEQ to require of us. And how much of that requirement, or under what timeline they require us to do it in is pretty significant, because it may mean additional staff, additional CIP, funding, maybe additional rates to cover some of the costs for that. So I think their involvement is, is very important, and will be very helpful for us. We've worked with them before, and I think they're the best firm for the job. And they were one of the shortlisted firms. And it, I think, at the time of that, I specifically mentioned that Brandon Caldwell would be most appropriate for this kind of work as well. So my finishing, closing statement here is, despite the great work the city, along with our other stormwater stakeholders has done to manage stormwater, the new permit conditions we anticipate from DEQ have the potential to overburden our stormwater program as it is today. The final conditions could result in several program changes, and we need Brandon Caldwell to help us adjust appropriately so we can both meet these conditions and at the same time, hold the level of effort and our utility rates to a manageable level. And the last thing I'll add is that we do have budget available for this work, and we have budgeted for this work. I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, John. Question from commissioners, first Commissioner Nacita?
I don't have questions, but I have some comments and discussion. I've been communicating with my fellow attorneys in the environmental community regarding recent decisions in the Oregon public school. I'm going to decide as far as when something's been argued and when a decision has come down later on. Did you signal A again?
How's that, Renee? Okay. And the Court of Appeals' decision on these particular permits, which, you know, most people know that I'm one of the plaintiff's attorneys on, is going to be probably issued no later than Labor Day of this year, based on other, other cases we've seen in the Court of Appeals. And I, you know, will confess to an obvious bias here, but I think we're going to win that case. And if we win that case, it's going to lead to a permit condition requirement that stormwater discharges meet state water quality standards. And this will follow recent developments in both California and Washington State that have all, that have already moved. have already moved, for various reasons, to make those, you know, impose those conditions on MS4 permits. This, as you all know, in Public Works, this has been bouncing around since about 2004. So, you've had a lot of time to think about it. And I'd kind of like to get some discussion of what your thoughts have been as far as contingencies, should that happen. And I'd also like to begin a discussion on, and I'm going to propose an amendment to this, so that we start thinking now about that, because even should the eventuality happen that the petitioners don't win this case, as someone who is, you know, an environmentalist, I believe that municipalities should take steps to ensure that their stormwater discharges meet state water quality, or not exceed state water quality standards as good stewards of the environment for that reason alone, and whether or not it is, you know, forced upon us by Uncle Sam or Uncle Ted or, you know, whoever, whatever uncle. So, I would like to propose an amendment, and I'll move to amend this personal service agreement, to have you all come back with an agreement to begin a strategy to have Oregon City's stormwater discharges comply with state water quality standards and a timeline on that, a cost estimate on what it would take, a timeline of it, and, you know, what we need to do to get that going in Oregon City. Secondarily, I want to bring up one particularly, particular facility in Oregon City that I've been told about in the community that I just don't know the status of, and maybe, John, you know about it. Much of the runoff from McLaughlin and Kanema, or, you know, the river view above Kanema, or above McLaughlin, I guess a lot of that pipe ends up just by the steelhouse. There's this gigantic pipe that juts out and then shoots straight down, and apparently was damaged in the flood of '96 and has never been repaired. Are you familiar with that facility?
Familiar with the crossing and the, and I know the pipe goes underwater. I haven't heard about damage.
Okay. Well, I've heard that it has, that it has been damaged.
It's been damaged.
And, you know, if we could get a report on that, I'd, you know, just like to see what's up with that. But I would like to propose this amendment to my Commissioners, because I really, really, you know, as a matter of, some of my fundamental values want to start Oregon City not just making improvements to stormwater quality, but actually do what I feel the statute, you know, envisions for us, is to actually, you know, have our water meet state water quality standards. So, with that, I will so move that amendment to this personal services agreement.
How is that going to be worded? I'm not clear what the wording would be.
Could I get you to postpone that just for a sec for a discussion, so we can understand what the impact is? We haven't had a staff response yet, and that may help shape the motion. Which one, John, do you want to, which one do you want to handle that?
I'm not sure how, I mean, this here is about a contract award. You're not talking about amending the amount of the contract. And what we're asking for is the ability to award this contract.
Correct.
Now, if the decision were that we wanted a larger scope of work for this contractor to take on to help us meet a new standard, then I'd want to not, I mean, we can always amend this contract. We could bring it back to the City Commission with a new scope of work and a new fee or an additional fee, and so, basically amending the contract. And I'm guessing that that work that you're talking about would be significant enough to where we'd want to bring that back to the City Commission. So, my thought on, I'm not sure, seems like you, I don't know if they're appropriate, are you making, it'd be better to make a motion that we want to look at a different water quality standard in the future, as opposed to holding up a contract award. I don't know. We need to get moving forward with at least our this work. Now, that doesn't prevent us from moving forward with different work in the future.
That's the question I have. Does the award of this prevent us from going to a higher standard in the future? I think that's what I would want to know.
And I think, I think actually this is a fairly broad topic, that I would, I would recommend that the City Commission takes some time, we've got a work session to discuss it, and we could have some professionals there that could provide input. And actually, I would also kind of mind for our team to be involved in the discussion as well. Certainly not opposed to looking at that as amendment, but I would agree with John's request that we could approve this personal services agreement with this scope of work and then come back with an amendment in addition to discussion about, it's a broader topic.
It might not need to be an amendment. It might just be a motion for additional work or different, looking at a different policy level.
Well, it might be an amendment if that policy resulted in them doing other things. So, you may end up getting an amendment anyway.
Later.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, I understand. I was just talking about tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, I think we want to be clear here, whether this, do you have any problem approving this scope of work and looking at something later? Commissioner Nocida?
Well, I don't, I don't mind approving this tonight with the understanding that we're going to look at an additional scope of work. If we make the decision with some certainty, I want the two linked, so it doesn't just get lost in the shuffle and, you know, never heard from again after tonight. If we want to put a timeline on when we want staff to come back, you know, with an additional scope, I'm fine with that. I don't want to just approve this and say, we'll anticipate seeing something else and then, I mean, there's a lot of things that I can name right now that have been lost in the shuffle that way currently, and...
I won't lose it in the shuffle. I will, I will promise you that we will, we will talk amongst ourselves and with Brown and Caldwell, and we'll watch this session as well with Brown and Caldwell and try and get an understanding of what that might mean in terms of a scope and a fee. And I think the bigger piece is the impact to your ratepayers, one of which I am. So, there's a significant amount of rate adjustment that we're talking about for those kind of standards to be met. So, I think that only is coming back in one bigger conversation.
Something else that we didn't really mention yesterday is there are some brand-new issues and topics that DEQ is discussing with us.
I have a list of some of those.
I've got those too, John. So, we've got such as post-construction stormwater management retrofit program, which is retrofitting our old system to be more low-impact development, hydro modification. These are all very, very big topics as well, and so much that we anticipate needing to augment our existing stormwater utility significantly with staff and funding for capital improvement programming. So, that along with understanding the water quality standards is a very, very complicated, daunting issue for this community. And so, we want to make sure that we're, I think we need to make sure, the other thing that's stressed a lot in this permitting program is making sure there's plenty of public involvement. So, I think that you might even want to have some public involvement in discussing, looking at water quality standards for our stormwater. So, I wouldn't even mind, yeah, I think it's a very large topic that we would, we'll forget about it, and we'll bring it back, but it takes a fair amount of preparation on our behalf.
I'm wondering if that could be a section, since you have multiple topics at our retreat, to talk about new and the different environmental...
It might take us a little more time to prepare for that.
Okay.
Quite frankly, because we are loaded up with...
Other things.
Other things in the next 10 days and two weeks, whatever it is. And I want to make sure we're prepared to discuss it and not just...
Do you have a, can you give us a general timeline, you know, for March 1st, maybe?
Probably the first part of March or the work session in March or something like that would be great, yeah.
Maybe aiming for the work session in March, since that's a more informal, or it's a way that we can roll out.
And move it into some, yes, that would be just fine. March would be great.
Okay.
We can also insert it into goals, too, if we wish to at the goal-setting session.
Okay. Well, then, I'll amend my motion to have that, you know, revised and expanded scope of work provided to us.
It wasn't seconded, so why don't you start over in the motion?
Okay. Then, I'll move to amend this agenda item approval to include directive to staff to provide the Commission with a revised and expanded scope of work to begin the process of strategizing on how stormwater discharges from Oregon City will meet state water quality standards.
Could I suggest that you could, that you would decouple it from the approval of this contract?
I thought it was pretty clear that I didn't want to do that, because I want to make sure that our commitment to a date certain is part of this vote, so it doesn't get kind of lost in the shuffle.
I would suggest a second motion after this.
I would, too.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I want to decouple it, because I think that makes it very clear and very focused, if you would.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's then, if you'll take that off the table temporarily.
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Neely?
Well...
You want a motion, then?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move the personal services agreement with Brown and Caldwell for...
Approval of?
Approval of, yes.
Thank you.
For professional services associated with what we're doing.
Ruled by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith, remember approval of the contract with Brown and Caldwell. Is there further comment or discussion? Yes, I see there is. Do we have a card? Okay. Mr. Gifford, yeah. No, I just need you to know. Thank you.
Hi, William. Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers...
Introduce yourself, please, for the record.
My name is William Gifford, and I still live in Oregon City. And the only question that I have is trying to read this, and although it's, some of this is a little difficult to read, the dollar amount of the $50,231, which is probably chicken feed in some regards, but I would like to know that if this contract says that that is the maximum amount that will be spent, or that's the amount that's going to be spent depending, regardless of how much work they do, will, well, I guess the one I'm asking is, is there any incentive for them to do the work faster and charge us less? I doubt that. Is there, is there any condition in here that says if they go over that, that they still have to do it for a maximum of $50,231? I'm just talking about the, yeah, everybody knows that we need to have some consultants help us with this, because we can't figure it out, but, and we all want good stormwater management, but I'm just talking about the dollar amount.
Questions about the accountability?
Yes.
Right, so, the contract is a total maximum, not to exceed, but on a time and materials basis. So, they are required to complete the work that is included in the scope of work, whether it takes them the amount of hours that they've listed or more. If it takes them less, which this particular consultant has consistently done, the work less, then we can either leave that contract open for additional scope items if we choose amend that contract to include additional scope, or we can close it.
But they have to do the work.
They have to do the work within that amount or less. And if they go over, they don't have the opportunity to come back and say, well, we underestimated, and we have to come back. They do have that opportunity, but it needs to be justified.
Okay.
Thank you. Or is there additional of the comment? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
For the record, Commissioner West has left the meeting at 8:20. Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait.
Oh, we have additional motion.
Yes.
Sorry.
Commissioner Nocida, to you.
I'm not going to let you get out of it. Okay, so, let me wrestle with some language here. I will move to direct, the City Commission to direct staff to provide the City Commission by our first work session in March, a revised and expanded, or a scope of work for a program of state, of stormwater management in Oregon City that will achieve the meeting of state water quality standards for our stormwater discharges. That's probably inartful, but I think, I think it captures what I'm trying to get at. If not, ask for clarification and make it...
Okay, yes. Commissioner Neely, do you want to go ahead? Even though you didn't sign up.
I did sign up.
Ah, there it is.
Anyway, for one thing, Mrs. Rush, I did mention other things that you were going to be looking at, and I wanted to encompass that. The work session isn't a decision-making. The way it's phrased is that we're going to be, we're going to make a decision in that, in that study session. That's the way it sounded, and that, and I don't think that was your intent, but it came out that way.
It would be so that we can start looking at it and discussing it that night, not necessarily voting on it, but reviewing it and starting to, you know, wrestle with it.
I think it's a little more complicated than the statement, and I think it would be better if we could bring you information about the topic. Because to bring you a work scope, the city to develop a stormwater management program that achieves state water quality standards by March is quite, we're not even sure we know how to do that right now. So, we know which water quality standards are the audible ones, or they're like drinking or like their groundwater cleanup standards. We need to do a fair amount of research on that. And then, it also, stormwater is such a difficult beast, because it's not all in pipes, and it doesn't all come from a source, and it doesn't all get flushed down the drain. It's on the nice, non-pointual elements to it that to really know that we're meeting state water quality standards with our stormwater management program is going to be very, very complicated. So, not only in addition to these other departments DEQ's looking at, and working towards at our permit, which are all to reduce the flood load in the Lima River, I think I would feel much more comfortable bringing commission information about the topic and kind of thinking about what our next steps would be to, so that we can understand what we're talking about.
So, essentially, the discussion starter at that March work session, where at that point, we can advise staff or develop together where we want to go with it, because right now, we don't know the options.
And also, the cost...
Precedented in this state. I'm not sure about Washington and California, but no one in this state is moving in that direction.
I assume that would be consultant work, since you're using Brown and Caldwell to get you to where we need to be right now.
I think DEQ's going to fall on their permit language...
Right now.
For this permit cycle.
Would that be acceptable to you, that the conversation, that we have the information rounded up by, you know, at that March work session, so that we can develop our process and our options?
Being in mind, I mean, Commissioner Nocida, I'm guessing, based on what little I know about your involvement, you know a lot more about this topic than any of your other Commissioners. And so, you're probably ready to hit the go button, and I'm guessing others aren't. So, wouldn't, I mean, it sounds like we want a fairly content-heavy meeting discussion, not necessarily an engineering scope of work, or maybe, you know, it's just an opportunity to provide a little education for all of them.
Well, I think it's, I think it's fair game to start discussing, and this may be what gets me recalled. But we need, I mean, I, look, I'm, because I do know affair about this, what I'm trying to do here is get this community to face what's coming. And I do think it's coming, because I think even, there are some other decisions out there that have asked EPA to, or have ordered EPA to promulgate rules, so that even if, you know, this case fails, you know, by next Labor Day, there's stuff, there's stuff coming down the road, two or three years down the road. And I would rather aggressively, proactively address this issue than wait till we're dragged in by pesky environmental lawyers like myself. So, I would... So, I would, I would, you know, I would, I do want to, you know, really push this. That's fine, if we want to do something as far as, you know, an information presentation, but I, since we're, since we've got a talented firm like Brown and Caldwell on board on this, I don't think it's out of the question that we could get some kind of preliminary numbers on some of the major things it's going to take to address this.
The costs, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, just let the community know, you know, you know, if it's in rates, I could show you guys some, you know, techniques as far as stormwater management that actually save money, you know, because they don't involve pipes, you know, I've worked on them. So, it's not, it doesn't always necessarily result in costing more. It changes behavior a lot, so I want, I want us to start grappling with that, and, you know, I think, you know, let's see what information you have as far as what you're talking about with some of this capital improvement stuff, and let's, you know, let's be upfront with the community on, you know, what kind of generalized costs we're, we're looking at.
I think that's the easy part. I think you want to let us catch up with you, because the strongest position for a new direction like this is to have a consensus position, so we need some time to understand, I think, the alternatives, the options, and the costs, so.
There are a number of other things that our staff is trying to get our arms wrapped around and to negotiate with this permit, and so, I want to make sure we do a good job, but this is, I just want to know it's a very tall order, so even having some really, a great comprehensive reputation for the first of March, it's a very tall order. So, we'll do what we can, but it may be, it may be an introduction, but we'll start the implementation to start this session.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now, did that require a vote?
No.
Or was this head non?
No, we gave staff, we gave staff direction.
I think realistically, we, you're, you might end up with a work session that's going to be devoted to this topic by itself, and I-
It's one of our work sessions, keep going.
Bigger.
And end.
Right, and I, I think we should leave open to the possibility of actually having a second work session in that month to deal with other issues.
Well.
I mean, I mean, it depends on how it goes, but.
On, on spring break.
Yeah, I think, I think March will be difficult, the change of city managers, where we'll be doing interviews, we've got a lot of additional meetings likely at that, in that month, so that we, that may be a transitional time, so we'll see.
So, the March first work session is a target for us to start with, but the change, the scheduling of that will yet to be determined, right?
Normally, we got the month of work session following the first commission meeting, is.
Between the two commission meetings, so it's the Tuesday between the two commission meetings.
That is the meeting date. You're not talking about moving that, you're, that is the meeting date?
No, that's the meeting date, yeah.
That you want to have, hear this, okay.
It's the normal work session date.
Okay.
It's the ninth.
As a target. Month nine, okay.
And, yeah, and so regardless of whether or not we have, in case we have to move a very large discussion to a different meeting, we will have something to do that, like.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you. Next is still a public works item. Oops, someone just moved my agenda. Who did that? Interesting how that happens. Must be Nancy. Next is a, where are we?
Seven C.
He's on the floor.
That's the problem. Yes, I thought it was McLaughlin Promenade, it's not coming up. Okay, it is the cracking of cement surface on the promenade wall. Ask for a report on that, and we have a really interesting set of memos, and Laura, are you leading up, leading off on that?
I am.
Hi, Laura Butler.
Good morning, my name is Laura Butler, I'm the project manager for the-
Good morning, oh, not quite yet.
Good afternoon, good evening.
One of those.
One of those days. I'm the project manager from the McLaughlin Promenade Restoration Project. With me is Bob Wallace from Wallace Engineering is in the audience, and then we also have Dave Goff of Kramer Galen and Associates, and we also have Mike Crawford from Pioneer Waterproofing, which is the contractor on this site. We're here this evening to provide you an informational presentation addressing your concerns regarding some cracks that recently occurred and some newly replaced wall caps along the McLaughlin Promenade. As you know, the McLaughlin Promenade is across the street. It's a long lineal park, which was dedicated to the city in 1851 by Dr. John McLaughlin, and later was developed with a series of stone walls and masonry as a part of the WPA project, and which was completed in 1938. The McLaughlin Promenade, as well as the adjoining grand staircase, are both locally designated historic structures, and they're both potentially eligible for national listing on the register as well. The city received our funding for the 2009 federal stimulus package to restore this local treasure. I wanted to begin by giving you an overview of our project. We're going to do, we've already begun doing a variety of work there. We started in September of 2009. As you can see on your screen, some of the work includes resetting some severely cracked stone walls, replacing wall caps, which is what we're going to talk about tonight. We only replaced a select number of them. In addition, we repainted approximately 25,000 lineal feet of mortar that had gone bad, removed a significant amount of graffiti, repaired spalling in the concrete, as well as 191 concrete rails, as you can see in that picture. Some of them were not in the safest condition, and we also replaced a majority of the grand staircase. This part in the project, we've already finished out the grand staircase, and a little bit of work adjacent to the Singer Hill, and now we're kind of moving along the McLaughlin Promenade, working from the elevator all the way to the BFW. And at this point, I wanted to pass the presentation over to our structural engineer, David Goff, to talk about the wall caps and specifically the problem.
Thank you for having me here today. Can you, everybody hear me?
Yes.
The wall caps are concrete over a stone wall, which I'm sure everybody's familiar with, and they're, it's a thin section, and it's a historical project, and the cracks tend to be straight across the sections, and if you look at the historical ones that are still located on the project, they're 72 years old, and they have, they experience, they exhibit the same cracking pattern, except that the cracking pattern on them is more frequent, because back then, they didn't have as good a cement as they do now, or as concrete. Cracking is due to a combination of many elements, and in this case, there's cracks in the stone wall that are already there, and they, when the stone wall expands or contracts due to temperature or settlement, it can settle vertically, or it can, it can move side to side, a crack is going to occur above that point, regardless of what, how we have done that. The 2003, I think there was a period in 2003, was, was it, and those have the same cracking pattern, but they're not as frequent as the ones in the historic cracks. The, the concrete caps are not structural concrete, they're a, it's an architectural feature of this stone wall to give it a smooth, you know, a uniform text, you know, appearance.
Essentially aesthetic.
Well, when they built that wall, they would have had a rock top here, and a rock top here, and a glob of mortar here, because the rocks aren't all the same size, and so the craftsmen back then, they decided to put a mortar cap on them, and there are things that we, that could have done, and I looked into them with a concrete company called Knife River here in Oregon, and we could have made a special concrete, but it wouldn't have been historical, you know, it, it would have had a different aggregate size, it would have had a different cement color, and it would have been probably $50 to $70 more per cubic yard, and we could have added control joints in the concrete caps, but they weren't part of the historical caps, they wouldn't look the same, but we could have, the concrete, it wants to break into one-to-one panels, and if it's stronger, you can stretch that out to up to two-to-one, and that's probably the shapes of the cracks you're seeing, the things, the caps are about that wide, and the cracks are about every this far to that far, and, but even if we put those control joints in, where there was a crack in the wall, in the stone wall below, and it moves, there's going to be a crack in the, in the topping, right above it. And so, I wasn't surprised by anything I saw there, and Pioneer Waterproofing has been in this business a long time, and I say that you get a lot out of doing a good maintenance program and sealing those, what, every three or four years, or?
Well, the water account's, we're using them, they're now, um, fifteen, twenty.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, but that's a, maintenance is the key to preservation of this project, and I'm proud to have worked on it.
So, in summary, we worked really hard at the beginning of this project to look at the correct mixed design of these wall caps to make sure that the cracks were minimized. We believe that the reasons that there are cracks in the wall caps are, you know, it's a large piece of, of material, and they're primarily coming up from the wall below. As you'll know, it, there's a couple of pictures on here, you can tell when it was colder, and it kind of, the cracks got a little bit bigger when it was cold, so these are new caps, and you'll see significant cracks. When it was cold, the concrete seized up, the gaps got bigger, and that's purely from the concrete moving with thermal, when it getting warm and cold, and then also from cracks in the substrate of the wall below it. So, we believe, you know, if you were to take a broken cap off, replace it, put a new cap on, those cracks would still appear, and we've also worked really hard in our mixed design to make sure that it's appropriate for this historic designation as well, so there were some things that we could have done to maybe make that wall cap a little bit stronger, but it would have either pulled away from the wall, or it wouldn't have looked right, it would have been the wrong color, the aggregate would have been the wrong size, so we feel that we have done the best we can for the cracking. Actually, right now, our inspector went out there yesterday morning, about 10 of the 40 wall caps that were replaced thus far have displayed some cracking, and they all look like about this. So, now that it's, those other pictures were taken when it was about, what, 17 degrees or so at the beginning of December, and now that it's warmed up a little bit, you can kind of pick out some slight variation of where the color is slightly different. So, in, in general, the, the cracks are really just more of a general discoloration, and we, where do we go from here? Staff will continue to monitor the cracking, we do daily inspections on the project, and as wall, wall caps are poured, we'll look at them then, and then also, as each section of the project is final out, we'll go through and final out those wall caps and make sure that they were poured appropriately, and at the end of the project, we plan on having our structural engineer come back and look through all of those replaced wall caps to make sure that they're sound, and if they're not sound, then we'll address it at that time. We are happy to be working with Pioneer Waterproofing, we believe they've done a fabulous job on this facility, and we're here to answer any questions. Three engineers and the waterproofing company, if we can answer any questions, yeah.
I appreciate all the resources you've brought to this. I think one of the issues for me may be in my expectations, I think that if we maybe had known that upfront, that would be part of the adjustment, adjustment to it, I guess in my mind, you know, they were going to be smooth and lovely and last another 50 years as smooth and lovely, so it's really fascinating to hear what historic preservation means in practice. You know, same materials and same kinds of processes, and then same cracks. So, the safety, of course, is, I think that the thing that was key to me in your report that, I'm not sure you mentioned up here, though, was the fact that, you know, the safety's not being compromised, the structure of the wall's not being compromised, it's just, again, essentially aesthetic, and you're not expecting the cracks to widen and have the wall caps fall off.
Hopefully not.
Oh, another expectation.
We're finding physics here also. Bob did some research in the basalt, which is the rock, the stone structure in the wall below, and concrete, which is the cap material, the coefficient of thermal expansion is about five times difference, so, the-
Fifty times.
Oh, fifty? Fifty?
Fifty times.
Yeah, so-
It's a zero.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, Bob done some, and you, you've got the concrete trying to expand, and the wall below it not, or vice versa, you know, it's, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, when, actually, Commissioner Nocida had sent out an email mentioning those cracks, and I did go down and look, and then I did look at that older section that you hadn't started repairing yet, at the southern end of the promenade, and I saw similar cracks, and several, actually several citizens that come before, well, three citizens that come be, talked to me about that, and I mentioned that, and he says, "Well, yeah, but you don't know when those cracks in the older section occurred." Sounds like it probably occurred shortly after the construction occurred. I did have a question, though, you were mentioning maintenance and sealing, and you pointing out that they'll come together and they'll grow apart depending on the season, of course, it's during the colder wet season, I presume they get more obvious. Whether or not, I imagine some, then some moisture is going to get into those cracks during that period of time, whether that would affect the, the stones below the crack or not, or whether it would have any major effect or not, now that's a question.
It's, yeah, if you get water in, into a solid substance and it freezes, it's going to move, move items and break it.
And even though, there was an argument about every three or 30, whatever years it is, it seems to me the sealant you might put on there, when it expands, the sealant itself might crack, and how often, how often do, should we be revisiting those, and how do you do it during the wet season when it's colder and the, actually, the cracks form? Whether a sealant can be put on at that time, and whether you recommend it, and how, how often? My, my question is, this is something perhaps city staff could do, but we have to really build it into kind of a budgeting process and everything else, you know, to make sure those things kind of occurred. What would you, what would you recommend the frequency with which we would do that, if in fact they, the cracks may occur every, every winter?
I'll let you address that.
Pull the microphone a little, yeah, towards you there. Thank you.
Thank you. The deterioration of masonry is, is usually a longer-term process, so you end up with large restoration projects with this by decades usually of neglect. So, if the city was to have a, a program of inspecting every three or four years and correcting any minor deficiencies that they found on an ongoing basis like that, you would probably never end up with a job that would exceed $4,000 or $5,000. Because where the cracks are, you'll, you would end up, if you have deterioration there of the mortar joints below that, is usually what happens, the moisture gets in and deteriorates the, the mortar joints in the stonework, but it's localized to just where the cracks are, so it doesn't become like a whole wall issue. So, it's, it's not, it's, it's cost-effective to, to maintain, it's, it's not like you're going to go back and, and in 10 years, end up with this type of a project again, so. You know, I mean, I just wanted to interject a little bit, I mean, what we're dealing with, when we talk about the expansion of, of mortar materials, everything has an expansion rate, and it's, it's almost, you should think of it like gravity, so it's, you can't stop it, you just have to address it. So, you know, you can either add in expansion joints or, or accommodate the movement in some other way, but if they were being devised, if the thing was being designed today, you would have put expansion joints in to allow for that movement when you built it. you built it. So, we kind of get hamstring a little bit in the historic end because we're trying to match what was done when it was built, and sometimes that's would be ugly part of it, too.
Commissioner Nacita.
Well, thanks. First, one of the cracks that I saw, actually, it was a main crack, and then there was like a kind of subsidiary side crack that went off the main crack in a manner that I thought at some point with weathering, that was going to be a chip. I mean, the little, you know, interior piece there was going to chip off it at some point. Can we anticipate that actually happening with a lot of these caps, where there's actually chunks coming off from the cracking?
There are no cracks like that in the work that we've done this year. There were maybe some cracks like that in the 2003.
Yep.
There was a couple of wall caps that were replaced in 2003. So, everything along the grand staircase was replaced in 2003. Everything adjacent to Singer Hill was this year. And then also from the public parking lot near the elevator, all the way down to VFW we're doing as well. So, some of those more severe wall caps were either historic, and you know, when they were replaced, or they were done in 2003, and they're starting to be a bit more significant. All of the ones this year are just pretty much straight lines. A couple of wall caps have a couple of cracks, but for the most part...
The ones I'm referring to, Laura, I think it was like in the steps just off of Singer Field Drive. Are you saying that was done in 2003?
That was 2003.
Okay. So, yes, the question I come to is, in things like this, 2003 was about six, seven years ago. Do these, are there warranties for this kind of stuff? I mean, when, what's, what as far as cracking, if anything, is warranted in the contract that we signed, like the project we were currently doing? Or is it just something that is anticipated, and were we informed in advance that we could anticipate this kind of cracking?
It's, I think what we're talking about here, it's impossible to warrant against. It's, I mean, that's why we have the inspection protocols in there that we do. I mean, if we've done a good job, and really 99% of the job is in the preparation work, so in the chipping back of the old mortar joints, and if that's done properly and the mortar's done properly, everything should work as well as possible. But at the end of the day, some of the things that make this harder to bond to, especially like on these caps, is that the basalt is so dense that we don't get the adhesive bond between the materials that we normally do. So, if we'd used a more porous stone when the wall was built, there's some of that cement is drawn out of the mortar into it, and you get a different kind of interlocking. Where we're relying more on a mechanical bond by the roughness of the stone. I'm not trying to get too technical, but that's why we see some of that. Then where you see, if, then we may see some cracks come up through the stonework, and that's just, the wall was built as one big monolithic unit, and the wall has on its own decided that it needs an expansion joint here, and it's made one. And so, we can patch that, a crack like that 100 times, and it'll come back because the wall needs to move at that spot. So, you know, the choice is, is that you can just kind of, you can cock it and put some sand in it so that it looks like mortar that allows more movement, or you can take some of the stonework out and actually make an expansion joint. But the wall will always move at that point because it just, nature makes it do it.
No matter how many wall caps are in that same spot, it will always crack in the same location if the wall below is cracked.
We've had a really good lesson on historic preservation of walls this evening, of that period at least.
Commissioner Nikita, I can answer your question that you asked. I have a picture in my briefcase of that one very crack that you discussed. It goes straight across, and then there's a second one that goes off, and it makes a triangular piece about that big. If the, that cap piece that's triangular is bonded, it will, it has a lot of years left in it. If it is, if it's loose right now, it, you know, it'll fall off, you know, in the near future. But when these panels are cracking into pieces this big by this big, or this big by this big, the stress, the cracks are creating where the cap needs to crack, just like the wall needed to crack. It's creating its own expansion joint. And through bond, you know, it's kind of glue, the cements in the concrete glue it to the rock below. And I believe that you'll get a lot of service out of this wall. It's lasted, the first one lasted 72 years, and it's still, parts of that are still being, you know, working.
Any other questions that we have? Thank you very much. Appreciate that scientific and historic view. Okay. Would you like to take a break?
Who?
Five-minute break. Yes, five-minute break.
I'll move to adopt. I would like to discuss them afterwards, but I move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith on the minutes. Nancy, the vote, please. Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris. Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Next, oh, Commissioner Neely.
That's right. If, on the first set of minutes, that's the August 19th set on page two.
On which ones?
Page two on the, on the August 19th set of minutes. It's page three of seven, I guess. Anyway, the issue was this, here at the bottom. We were talking about this sewer pipe that went over Coffee Oak Creek, and there are ways that we could go ahead and talk about putting a bridge over that or something, and some things were suggested. But we really haven't discussed what could be done, and I think, I think at one point we need to have that discussion. I know we're getting filled up on agenda items, but it becomes an issue where on the one side of the, one side of the creek, there was also, there were already built complexes, and they were not interested in having any kind of easement going through there, which could serve as kind of a public access bridge across there. And I, at one point or another, I want to discuss what we in fact can do. And I just wanted to make that comment, and I don't know when we want to build that into our already full agenda in terms of work sessions, but...
Let's put it on the list, and let staff put that in the queue. We do have a long list of things.
And the other question, although it's got specific reference, I think it's a more general one. When we do amend the minutes, we oftentimes don't see the amended minutes. And of course, I guess we could go online to make sure they were amended, but I presume they are.
Yes, they are.
Yep.
Okay. Let's move along then, back to the agenda. And we have a contract change order, 2009 water system improvements with Tapani Underground. Who's that? Nancy? Nancy Crashour, City Engineer, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. We're in the middle of our 2009 waterline replacements project, and in doing the improvements over on Lynn Avenue and on Fourth Avenue, we gave quite a bit of additional thought to a section of pipeline that was, of the transmission line that was going to remain in place and ultimately soon need to be replaced in the really steep section on Fourth down to JQ Adams, between JQ Adams and Monroe. And that's a piece of pipe that we would really rather not replace in place because of its sensitive habitat and steep slopes. So, we, the project engineers put their thinking caps on and came up with an alternate that, rather than maintaining that alignment for that transmission line, we're going to route it over to Lynn Avenue, basically move it over to Lynn Avenue. And then, rather than replacing the 12-inch pipe down Fourth Avenue, we'll just put in an 8-inch standard distribution system pipe. So, that does result in a change order, much different than was anticipated in the original contract. And it does, it's not an insignificant change order, but I think in the long run, it is a better, better system, system management improvement. And also, if we should ever have problems with a leaking in the old section of the line, if we hadn't replaced it yet or moved it, then we could, we would need to be concerned about slope stability issues as well. So, I think it's a, it's a good improvement to the previous contract that you had entered into with Tapani. And it is about $184,000. Interestingly enough, because the, this particular contract came, the bids were quite a bit lower than the budgeted amount for this year's waterline replacement project. We still have budget in the, in the budget that was approved by you last, last May. So, that's not, we don't need to do any budget amendments or anything like that. So, I recommend that you approve this change order so that they can continue working on that improvement.
A change order. So, are there questions of staff before a motion, or do you have a motion?
You got a green light on it.
Ooh, Commissioner Neely.
Anyway, just to make sure, was this, was this a line item, budget item, when we had our, when I passed our budget, or was it part of the more general thing?
We'd see it in the narrative for the Water Division. It would be listed as 2009, actually, it could have been 08, 09. You know, the budgets don't exactly meet our waterline construction schedule usually.
No.
So, but it would show up in the narrative, the general waterline improvements for the year. And then, when we did the, actually, the engineering contract to do the design for, to award the contract to the engineering designers, we would list specifically where each waterline was being replaced, what the actual scope was for those annual waterline replacements.
And you said it wouldn't require any budget amendment.
Right.
My question is this, and it's probably too early for you to say, but with this additional amount, was there any reason that by the end of this fiscal year, you would think that budget line item budget was exceeded?
No.
So, so this is still well within the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you have a motion, please?
I'll move the, I move...
You're still on the floor.
I'll move the, I'll move the change order.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment or questions? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please. Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. I believe that concludes our general business. Let me look down there. It does. So, we move into the consent agenda. May I, may I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda?
Some.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Nacita.
Wait a minute.
That's okay. It was co-moved by... I'll see my second to Commissioner Nacita.
On the motion for the consent agenda, Nancy, the vote, please. Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita.
Aye.
And Mayor Norris. Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Excuse me, Mayor. Just a note, a comment, that this now updates us on all of our minutes for City Commission. I just wanted to make a note of that. It was a lot of hard work.
Yes, thank you. You are to be commended. That's very commendable. You worked very hard on that. Thank you. Okay. Communications will begin with our City Manager, Mr. Patterson.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission, I only have one item proceeding which is listed there, and with your permission, I'd like to move that to the work session for next week. Give you more time to look at that, and we'll also have a little bit more time to get some more information on this.
Okay, moving into Commissioner Communications. I have several appointments.
Madam Mayor, I do have one name.
You have more, you have more.
I do have one name. Mr. Kreisman needs to report to you on the legal proceeding.
Yes, Mr. Kreisman.
This involves a case of Miller versus Wriggle, which has a long history at the city. It started out with a partition request, I want to say about nine, 10 years ago, in the Rivercrest neighborhood. And the commission approved it, and eventually led to litigation that involved pretty much every member of that Rivercrest subdivision. At the end of the litigation in Circuit Court, the city was dismissed, and attorney's fees were awarded against the, the people that brought the lawsuit. They should have gone to Luba, they should have done a number of other things. But in any event, city prevailed. The judge specifically said that the city took every action to, to keep this reasonable, and the plaintiffs kind of did everything they could to extend it and to make problems. In any event, the plaintiffs appealed that to the Court of Appeals. Last month, the Court of Appeals dismissed their, their appeal, affirmed it, actually, they didn't dismiss it, they affirmed it without opinion. The attorney for the city, we, in order to try to keep costs down, we put, came together with a number of attorneys for some of the other defendants. And in any event, they're now looking at whether they want to seek attorney's fees on appeal. Generally, it's not very often that the Court of Appeals awards attorney's fees. I think there's a general consensus that the people ought to have their day in court. At the same time, this, if to the extent there is a case that merits it, this very well might. The Circuit Court was pretty clear about their, their thinking that there really wasn't a reasonable basis for the lawsuit. There really didn't seem to be much of a reason for the appeal. I can give you more details about the appeal, but it gets convoluted really pretty quickly. And I guess, looking for some input from the City Commission, right now, the appeals fees are about $40,000. The cost to put together a motion to seek more, to seek our fees on appeal is probably about somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000. And the question that there's some struggle with is, number one, do we want to continue it in any way, or do we just want to say, "Good enough, we're done," and just leave it alone? At the same time, do we want to, a little bit more money may result in a return to the city of its attorney's fees. And this, you know, the way that the attorney's fees against the original plaintiffs was collected was a lien on all the properties. Whenever any property transfer came, came up, they would have to pay it off. And what they ended up doing is that a number of people who really weren't aware of what was happening ended up paying those attorney's fees. That wouldn't be the case in this situation because only five, and five people really, seven people, two husband and wife pairs, were participants in the appeal. And so, the ones who actually continued this, this litigation would be the ones who would be responsible for paying any attorney's fees. So, that's some general background. I'm happy to ask, answer questions, and don't necessarily need a vote as much as some input. Is this something that you think makes sense to seek attorney's fees?
Are we the sole determiner of that, or...
No, we could choose not to seek our attorney's fees, and the other, I guess, respondents on appeal could, could seek theirs as, as well.
Is there a deadline for making a determination on this?
Believe it's two weeks from, from now, if I remember correctly.
Question comments? Commissioner Neely?
Yes, well, I guess my, I'll ask the question. What was the, what was the cost to the appeals on, in the Circuit Court? Do you know offhand?
It was about $20,000 was what we awarded, which was less than what we spent. Essentially, what had happened was they filed a complaint, they filed multiple complaints, and the court dismissed a complaint. And from that point forward, the court said everything the city did after that.
Was it $2,000 less?
Don't believe so. I think it was significantly less.
I, I, I mean, the decisions have been made. They've been made in our favor. I...
A lot of times.
I, I think maybe that's sufficient from my standpoint.
I concur.
All I think is, if we went ahead and went that direction, it's going to create more ill will with a few people, and I don't think it's necessary.
I should mention one other thing. There is a chance that the plaintiffs could seek review at the Supreme Court. They have 60 days in which to do that. They have 60 days in which to do that. I think it extremely unlikely that the Supreme Court would take review. They get to pick and choose which cases they like. They take about one out of every 10. And my experience with it is, this is just not the type of case they'd be interested in taking on. I've been wrong before. So, but assuming that doesn't happen, this should be the end of that litigation.
Any other questions?
Mayor, too, I'm going to have Ms. Crush our report on a crosswalk that you had asked about.
May I interject here? Before we get off the reports from Mr. Kowaisman, could I ask, as a continuation of a legal report, that you share with the public, the proceedings about the Blue Heron bankruptcy case? And I only ask that because there are city interests involved, and I, you know, I think it's appropriate that the public be apprised of this.
Give you a, a brief update, that, as you know, on December 31st, the Blue Heron Company filed bankruptcy, filed a bankruptcy proceeding in the U.S. Bankruptcy Court. There was a hearing on Monday, the first day motions, in which essentially, the Blue Heron and its, its bank essentially came to terms on how Blue Heron continued to use its cash, get authority from the Bankruptcy Court to use its bank accounts, to pay wages and to pay fees and other such things. And they filed under Chapter 11, which means that what they, what they need to do is, their plan is to put together a plan for how they will continue to operate their business. And that'll happen over the next several months, as they talk with their various creditors. The city is not a creditor, however, it does provide utility services to, to Blue Heron. So we will be, you know, at least tangentially involved in, in the bankruptcy proceeding as they figure out how to make sure the water and sewer and other things continue to be provided. The, the next hearing is scheduled for early February, when they expect to, to come back with some additional information. And that's, that's really the status of, of the litigation. They, they haven't laid out the full details of their, of their plan. They have identified what their issues are, who the creditors are, what the, the amounts that they owe are, and sort of laid the genesis. One of the things that they, they do say in their filings is that we, we want to come back with a plan that, that continues to work, but that they are, they, they could liquidate the, the facility as well.
Yes, you mentioned property taxes are part of the proceeding, and they're, they're current on their property taxes?
My understanding, and I don't see Mr. Wimmer here, but that's, that's my understanding, is that they're current on their property taxes and their utility payments.
So we're actually owed nothing at this point, but depending on how things go in the future, whether liquidation occurs or not, obviously could have an impact.
Right. And, you know, post-petition fees and charges typically don't get discharged in bankruptcy, but of course, they could file another bankruptcy proceeding after they get out and discharge the utility fees. As a general rule, and this is a very complex area of law that I'm not that familiar with, current property taxes aren't dischargeable. So even if they do file a bankruptcy, the, the property taxes will be paid eventually. They may become delinquent and may not be paid until the sale of property or, or something else. But the, you know, the utility fees may, may end up somewhere else, so that's, that's what we know now.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for the report.
Yes, I think it was Commissioner Neely that asked about the side distance for the crosswalk that's out here, right outside of City Hall. And the, so there's actually two crosswalks over there. There's the marked crosswalk that connects more to the promenade building, and then there's the crosswalk that's not marked, that's just at the intersection of Seventh Street and Singer Hill, and that you tend to use if you're coming up from the grand staircase. So we looked at that, and there's three primary recommendations we're making. One is to take out one of the parking spaces next to the marked crosswalk. So take out one space there. You could take out two, but given the demand for parking in this area, and what we, what we believe are fairly slow speeds along that street stop sign, although we have seen, Mr. Wimmer was telling us about some crazy driver coming down High Street and swinging around the corner and being, but that's hopefully not the normal driver, right, Chief Conrad?
Could we move Chief Conrad's office to that?
Yes. We should post...
No, the police have their own building.
We should, we should at least post an officer at that corner, though. So then, so that would be the first and very simple upper recommendation, and we could work with Scott Archer's parking group to do that. And then the second recommendation is to put in a sidewalk across the planter, the planted area, not far from the McLaughlin Neighborhood sign. Because when people cross, when they get to the top of the grand staircase, they cross over, and there's really no sidewalk there. They just cross over because it's an intersection. And, well, but it is technically a crosswalk.
Yeah, legally.
So we would recommend that we put a sidewalk there, so people can use that crosswalk. And then we, then as a third recommendation would be to put in ramps at both ends of that crosswalk, so that we can actually have safe passage and accessible passage for all pedestrians. And I don't think this has been budgeted in any way. It's simple to take out the parking space, but other than that, we might want to either insert this in our transportation system plan when we update it next year, or look at it in the next budget, or if the commission wanted to move forward on it more quickly than that, just let us know.
Great, thank you.
From, and I guess, I guess then, are you looking for some direction at this point? Or is this just a report at this point?
I guess it would be good direction to say, if you want to think about getting it done very soon, to think about what you want to budget it out of, et cetera, or if you want to wait and put it, yeah, file a little...
There's almost no cost associating with removing one parking place, and I, I think we could give that direction at this point, since there's almost no cost associated with it. I mean, you looked at the side distances, and you do regard it as an issue.
Yes.
Is that a good enough...
These are three distinct recommendations that could be done in phases.
Okay.
And the one is obviously the most, would be the first, the highest priority.
Highest priority, okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Nocida.
Before we get off the City Manager's report, I just want to ask Mr. Patterson for an update on the request for illumination down, on the hop slot.
I have an update on that this evening, but...
I did look at the intersection, and there is a light, a PGE pole-mounted light at that intersection, which is common to most of the intersections downtown. If you wanted to put lighting, that, that block does have streetlights as well. If you wanted to put lighting on the property itself, that would be a property cost, and we didn't look into that.
A property cost?
On the lot itself. Because otherwise, it's lit similarly to the other blocks in that area.
The folks in the law library have expressed a concern about the interior of the, the lot, when they, you know, when they, when they park there and come out.
Since it's not a, a real parking lot, it's a temporary gravel parking lot, it doesn't have the typical amenities that most parking lots do, such as landscaping and lighting. So it would be, it's really, it's, it's an urban renewal property, or a city property, I believe.
The commission wants us to light it, we could put a light in it.
But that's going to, it's an expense, and we'd have to give some cost estimates and determine if that's a priority for the commission.
I guess, I guess it would help to have a cost estimate to determine if, you know, if it's something we want to make the effort on. If we could get a cost estimate, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Is that the rest of you as well?
It's fine.
Finished? That would be it? Okay.
I got it, I got it. Actually, I got a light on for me.
For a question on City Manager?
Yeah, as the City Manager, I believe Commissioner Smith had asked the, the south end flashing light, and I don't know if that's on the agenda.
Next agenda.
It's on the following one. Okay, I just wanted to clarify it.
I've talked with them about that, too. Okay. Next, I have a series of, of appointments since the end of the year, so we still have some openings on boards and commissions, but these are the ones for this evening. First of all, I understand that I failed to mention one back in September, so I would like to announce the appointment of Mike Mitchell to the PrAC, to Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. It is retroactive to September 16th, 2009. His term will expire at the end of the year in 2011. Next, appointment of Karen Moore and Laura Ingram to the Library Board for, a term to expire December 31st, 2013. Carol Polly is a reappointment to the Metro Enhancement Committee, to the end of December 2013. Jonathan David and Ronald Haas have been reappointed to the Transportation Advisory Committee for terms to expire December 31st, 2012. And that completes the appointments for this evening. We'll have more next meeting. So moving into Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Smith, did you wish to be first?
Sure.
As I see your name here.
Well, first of all, I, I wanted to make a comment that, I can't believe a year went by. It's unbelievable. One of the things that I was really interested in doing as a Commissioner in Oregon City was to get more students involved, and it seems like it's crazy that a year went by, but there's a student here from Oregon City High School tonight that apparently doesn't have homework.
Do you know his...
Jared Reynolds, who's very involved in student council and an amazing leader in the school itself, has shown interest in, in what's going on in the city, and, and came tonight to spend the evening with us. So I hope it was worthwhile, and I appreciate him coming.
Appreciate you being here.
I, these are, I guess, I have a couple of follow-ups that I have questions about that I maybe should have asked under City Manager time, but the first was, we've been talking extensively, and there's been two articles recently in the newspaper regarding the Ermater House, and we kind of, I think, gave staff some direction on, on what the next step was to be with the Ermater House. I'm kind of wondering what has happened since that last meeting? If we, we've been in contact with the Hardings, or what's the next step in dealing with the Ermater House?
Commissioner, we, I hope you can hear me on this. We are, I think what happened there was we had a little leg with some vacation times and stuff with staff, and Ms. Kai and I, Denise Kai from my department, is, is going to be contacting the Hardings to set up our meeting, hopefully within the next probably week or a couple of weeks or so, and try to get, try to, try to get the tenet of agreement put together that the commission directed us to look at doing with the Hardings for the management of the, the volunteer management agreement, or whatever we'll call it, and to bring that back to the commission. We are, we are doing that. It's just, it was just a matter of getting that meeting scheduled here, so.
I just will say, though, that the past agreement with the Hardings ended on the 31st, and as of today, they still haven't heard anything from the city, and are virtually in the process of leaving the house. And so this should happen quickly, or we should at least make some contact with the Hardings quickly, because they may be gone. And so I, I do believe they got one phone call this week to notify them, the city has decided to order a case of toilet paper for the house. So as far as I know, that's the only progress we've made. So I think it needs to be soon, because I, I would hate to find out that we're too late. I, and I also wanted to get clarification from the City Manager about the recruitment process. I have the, the document for the City Manager search overview and all of that, and it talks about the, the subcommittee that would...
That would be mine.
Would be...
May I interrupt you? That's on my report.
Okay. Are you going to say that you already have a subcommittee?
No, I'm going to appoint one this evening.
Oh, okay.
Because that is coming up, so that was on my agenda. You want to just finish?
Okay. Well, I guess, can I ask a question regarding that?
Kind of confused, because you've just gone through your mail report.
No, my, that's just the appointments. I haven't finished my report.
Wouldn't this be an appointment? You just said it was an appointment. It was a subcommittee.
Well, it's also a conversation.
Anyway, my question was, how does a subcommittee get formed? And apparently, the mayor chooses that. And the next question would be, it states here that that subcommittee would submit 10 or fewer applicants to the full City Commission for review by January 19th. I'm concerned by the word "fewer," because 10 or fewer implies that that subcommittee could essentially choose the top three without any discussion from the rest of the commission. And I, I think that that's, so I would like us to see that, whoever is on that subcommittee, that we lean towards 10 rather than fewer, in, in terms of seeing the applicants as an entire commission. So I guess I'll get the answer to who's on that committee in a second.
Yes, let's talk about that, since you brought up the topic. It, I think that is a typical kind of clause, because often in a group of, of applications, there are 10 or fewer who are qualified, so I think that was just a broad, a broad statement. But for the subcommittee, I would like to ask Commissioner Neely and Commissioner Smith, if you would like to go through that review.
I certainly would.
I, I would, too. If, if in fact, the subcommittee does indicate why, why people were left, left off the shortlist. I mean, they didn't meet the qualifications that we, we had and so forth, so it's rather, it's rather clear as to, to how the selected individuals were actually selected. I mean, we've had cases before where, awarding contracts and so forth, we didn't consider requests for proposals because they never, they never met the criteria. And I, I think really that has to be the basis for the subcommittee making the screening.
I agree, and, and these are only guidelines. So if the subcommittee believes there are 12 qualified applicants that we ought to see, I think the subcommittee ought to feel free to bring those forward. That would certainly be my understanding. Commissioner Nocida.
I'd like to know in our charter or our codes, whether there's any authority for a subcommittee like this. The City Manager is hired by the commission, and I have to express some discomfort and objection to even the screening process for the selection of the City Manager not being a process of the full commission throughout the entirety of the process. I will share also that I spoke with Commissioner West this morning about this, and that she was in concurrence with me. I'm sorry, she's not with us now, but I think she would confirm, if, if notified or if called, that she also felt that the selection process should be one of the full commission throughout the process. And my objection is strong enough that I would take it to a motion to have this be a process of the full commission throughout its, throughout the entirety of the process.
Go ahead. Jim Lefler?
Commissioner, I just want to clarify, the, it's a two-step process. This isn't the selection. The selection is being done by the commission in, in total. It is a screening process to, you know, so far, we're at 23 candidates, and, you know, the intent of the screening committee is to, to go through the, the screening process, normally for, for any position. And the reason that the 10 number came up, normally for a position, if you have anywhere from six to eight qualified candidates for a, for interview, that's, that's, I guess, the average, so to speak, the industry average for getting one hire out of six... the average, so to speak, the industry average for getting one hire out of six to eight qualified candidates. So, I put 10, and it was, it was not so much an arbitrary number, but, you know, based on HR experience.
I, I don't have any objections to what you're saying, Mr. Loeffler. I have an objection that, that, just that the whole process is not part of, that is, is a process of the full Commission because it is the Commission that hires the City Manager.
I understand. I guess the rationale behind having a committee was, it would be somewhat easier to have, hopefully, three people than the whole Commission at, at one time to, to do the screening, but-
I agree, and I, but I don't think, I mean, having five instead of three do this.
I'll second your motion.
It doesn't need to be a motion. I think we just talked about it.
Yeah.
It doesn't need to be a motion.
I, I-
You want to look at all of them?
I, I think the answer is that I would, I think we, we can all look at all of them. And we'll all have them before us, we can break forward why individuals don't qualify, and I, so I, I don't think it's a big issue. The, the point is, three of us are going to look at all of them at one level, right?
No, two.
Just what?
Just two.
You had a committee of three.
No, I just said two.
Oh, I thought you were on the two.
No, I'm not.
I have an even bigger problem if it's only two. I'm going to, no, I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion.
No, 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 we don't need a, we don't need a motion. We don't make-
I have the right as the Commissioner to make the motion.
You do, but we can just do it without-
I'm going to make a motion. I move that the entire Commission be part of the entire screening, review, and selection process for the new City-
And, and I seconded the motion, and I think we just go through the process.
Okay. We, well, we don't need to because we're-
We don't have to argue about it.
No, we don't. All right, moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Neely, to have the entire Commission sort through the, go through the entire process of City Manager selection. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That will be a posted meeting.
Yeah, it'll be a posted meeting. So, what format do you want? Do you want that to be work session, or, I mean, you're going to get them all at once at home? How are we going to do this? You have a suggestion? It makes them all public. Are they all wishing to be public at this point because they've submitted their names?
It's actually in Oregon, they are public, but you probably just reduced your candidate pool from anyone.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about. We don't have a-
Well, my preference would be to, because of the confidential nature of the application, the information on the applications, that we, we kind of do it in a controlled format. But I can certainly forward those to you electronically.
Can we do it in a work session?
I guess, I guess I'm not-
Wait, wait, just a second, please. Can we do it in a, I don't think we can do it in an executive session. It's not an executive session.
Personnel matter.
Personnel matter, yeah. He's going to answer the question.
Yeah, no, we'll let him.
What you could do, which may be better, is have, run off those applications, give everyone a packet, let you go through those individually, select that group, and then meet with the ones that usually are key.
Makes sense.
I mean, if you're in a public meeting, if you're going to go through and talk about why you're taking candidates in and out, you're liable to start losing the ones you have here.
And, not to interrupt, Larry, but I will. And to, I can, in similar situations, I can give you blind copies of the applications. In other words, I-
Oh, good.
Names are gone, social security numbers, well, the non-encoded phone numbers, addresses. So, all you have are their qualifications, their resumes, you know, and that's it.
That's great.
So, so then you can, and you have, then they're known by a number. They're assigned a number, and then you quantify your, your remarks based on their skills.
That's good.
Okay, yeah, I've been on selection committees that way. Commissioner Nocita.
I did want to, I'm curious, just as a matter of clarification, the claim of losing from the applicant pool, if, if, if the entire Commission was going to see 10 people, I, I don't see why there wouldn't be the risk of, to the applicant pool with, with, you know, a public knowledge of 10. But, I mean, I don't-
I think, well, I can't answer for Mr. Patterson, but I will. I have a feeling that, once, if, in a public meeting, and the names are, if their names become public, some individuals who are currently employed in various places may feel that their employment could be put in jeopardy by being known that they are currently in search for another employment with another municipality or, or organization. Usually, the, their employer is not notified until they become finalists, and that's, that's the, you know, so, you know, they could come in, interview, and their employer may not necessarily know that they are, in fact, a candidate for a position unless they are one of our one, two, or three finalists.
We let them know when their names will become public.
But, in the process that Commissioner Smith has in front of it, it seemed that there could be up to 10 finalists.
We choose, but we would select from that of the pool to interview.
I understand that. But the, the names would be public when there was the selection of 10? Because 10, 10 would be forwarded to the Commission, so any, any fear of risk of losing candidates for the applicant pool would be extant anyway, in my opinion.
And we would, we would let them know at that point, so make that determination. Mr. Kabeisman?
It, it might be good to make sure that you, you work out the entire process now.
Yeah.
You know, it sounds like the plan is for each of the Commissioners to receive a copy of each of the applications. You guys provide that information back to Mr. Loeffler with some type of ranking, and is it, all five Commissioners have to agree to interview the candidate? Three out of the five Commissioners, a numerical score, how?
I would assume that it would be a priority ranking, and we would look at how many we-
But the entire Commission will interview the candidate.
Yeah.
Yes, no, I don't think that was ever a question.
Who gets?
Yeah, I think the only time that we had talked about having a smaller group was just in the initial, you know, look-through of the initial candidate. Commissioner Neely?
Let's come back to the, the issue. I mean, we can do all this, and we're going to come together and then discuss it. Now, let me come back then to Commissioner Nocita's question. It is a personnel issue. Can we actually discuss that within an executive session?
Executives, there's a general exemption for executive sessions considering the employment of a public officer employee. However, the exception granted by that does not apply to the employment of the chief executive officer of a public body unless, A, the public body has advertised a vacancy, we've done that. B, the public body has adopted regular hind procedures, we've done that. In the case of an officer, the public, in the case of a chief executive officer, the governing body has adopted hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives in meetings open to the public in which the public has an opportunity to comment on the standards, criteria, and policy directives. So, you can, in fact, do it in an executive session, but only if you have adopted hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives in meetings open to the public. And I want to look into that a little bit more to see if those standards and criteria have to be specific to the chief executive officer, or if it's more general hiring standards and criteria, and we'll, we can get an answer to that pretty quickly.
In our charter and in our, in the-
And the hiring policy documents that we already have.
So, we have time, so you can get back to us on that one, because we're not going to be doing interviews.
Before the next meeting.
Well, he would get back to us anyway, yeah.
And, you know, this is when you get to the considering, the exemption is to consider the employment of a, of a public officer, so the screening, is that really considered employment, or is that sort of a screening function? So, we'll, we'll look into that and get some to you before, well before your next Commission meeting.
That's important to know. Okay, so, timeline for that then?
Well, at this point, I can, currently, the, let me back up here. We re-advertised because our advertisements were only for 30 days, so effective January 2nd or so. We, we put on the League of Oregon Cities and the ICMA website for another 30 days. At that point, we weren't, our applicant pool wasn't as good as it is now, only in the past several days have we received a good handful more or so of applicants. So, we put, initially, we were closing on the 12th, and now we have first review after the 12th and closing on the, on the 30th. But we can, excuse me, we can modify that accordingly. So, anytime after the 12th, I can provide at least all the, all the applications, the blind copy of the applications, and we can get started working on that tomorrow, but to have it ready for the 12th or immediately after. I can provide the packet and the, you know, as far as some suggested grading criteria or things that you'd be using to evaluate the candidates. The ideal candidate profile would be one of them, but I may provide you a matrix which will allow you to, to take a look for certain skills or certain qualifications that, that you may feel are more important than others. And I can certainly solicit input from the Commission as far as what skills or input you feel that you'd be looking for other than what's already in the ideal candidate profile. And so, and then it's, it's a grading of zero to five normally, five being the number one type, you know, individual, zero being, they don't have any skills at all, and then, or none. And then we, and then I, I compute your results and then provide you, provide back to you your ranking, cumulative ranking that the whole Commission provided. So, the other caveat, normally, when these are done, they're done individually. In other words, none are done by a group. So, my, my preference, recommendation is that they're done, each Commissioner will do their own and not, not confer with another in the ranking process. And then, and then this way, you submit that back to me, and, and then I give you the final result.
Okay. Any more questions, concerns? So, then, so, so-
Timeline.
Yeah, by the next meeting, perhaps, let's see, that's the 16th, is that right? Or maybe by, by January?
Let me see, the 12th is next Tuesday, and-
We need them by then, though. We have time.
Probably, you would have them certainly by, by next Friday, the 15th, probably sooner than that. And then, you would not be able to, well, I'm not going to speak for you, but you probably wouldn't have them ranked by the following Wednesday, which is the next meeting, the 20th. My recommendation is, you know, if you can get them done that week and be done, you know, by the 22nd, by Friday, the 22nd, then I can tally them up and have a, you know, tentative list the week of the 25th, which is actually what we were shooting for.
Sound good, everybody? You have time? I just want to clarify too, we do not have a hard deadline. If applications come in, do we, applications come in February 2nd, they can, and it's a good candidate, we can add them to the pool. Isn't that correct?
Well, we do, we did close the 30th, or the 31st.
January 30th?
Yes.
So, what happens if, if a viable candidate application comes in?
We-
I thought we talked about that not necessarily being a hard deadline like a grant, you know, five minutes after five?
That was, we talked about the 12th being not the hard deadline, but if, if we do initial screening and, and go through the process, it becomes, having to, having to back up and, and go through the process again could be, could be an issue. That's why in the job announcement and in the recruitment-
You'll mind it.
We asked specifically to, to apply sooner rather than later, and even though we are planning on closing or, or screening as soon as the 12th, most job seekers realize that once the 12th hits, their window of opportunity is closing very quickly.
But if you have a good candidate that comes in afterwards, and the Commission is not that happy with the candidate pool they have at the 12th, then you could, you could add those candidates.
I will, I will, you know, we'll keep them. I will certainly accept them and let them know that we've received it, that, that the first screening has already taken place. And then if none of the, none of the folks from the initial round, initial screening come, come to fruition, then we'll go ahead and, and provide you the next group as, you know, as alternates.
Okay. Other concerns? Commissioner Neely?
I just got to put it to the attorney. Would anybody ever be able to successfully challenge it since we had the deadline the end of January?
If an application came in on the 2nd, I think if there was a strong candidate, I'd want to talk to Mr. Loeffler about some things to make sure that we're well protected, such as, you know, maybe reopening it and allowing other people to submit, you know, and doing some things to make sure that there's not an issue.
Okay.
Okay, good. So, if you'd help cover us for contingencies, I think that would be, be great since we don't have the answers.
He said, tell me what you want to do, and we'll tell you how you get there.
I like that in the attorney. Okay, any other concerns about this? Okay, great. Process is rolling, I like that. You finished with your report?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Shall I go back to mine, or you want to do yours?
You have one, if you complete yours. Commissioner Neely?
I have none.
You have none tonight? Okay. I have several things. Tomorrow morning is the elected officials meeting with Congressman Schrader to talk about congressional priorities, he'll talk about the appropriations process, and we get the official forms. And so, I will be discussing, you know, things about small business initiatives that help the community, some of our additional transportation, federal requests, but is there anything else that I should bring to his attention tomorrow morning? I don't need to, I mean, I meet with him fairly regularly, so I, I think we have, we have his ear, so I can do it any other times, but-
I don't know, he's going to be familiar with our proposal on the Ermertinger House anyway, and that-
I briefed him on that.
Yeah.
And he'll need to shepherd that through for us, so I've got a couple of things to talk to him about.
Yeah.
But let me know if you think of something, and we can bring it up again here. I also, on, since we're, just mentioned transportation, I would, I'm seeking your permission to go again on the J-PAC trip, which is early March. All of the J-PAC reps will go back and to lobby Congress for additional transportation funding, and like the opportunity to do that. Any objections?
No.
Okay. Then, the other thing, measures 66 and 67, we're going to be voting on, and many communities are looking at the impacts and the effects. And so, I have talked with the League of Oregon Cities and also Speaker of the House, Dave Hunt, about the effects on, on cities. And the one that I have come up with is that the, our shared revenues might, might be in jeopardy were it to fail, were those measures to fail and the legislature found itself in deficit. Speaker Hunt said directly to me, I'm just passing on his comment, that he, he was asked by the League of Oregon Cities, would he protect the city's right to the shared revenues? You know, liquor tax, 911 tax, and the third one, transportation tax, gas tax. And he said, no. He said, everything would be on the table. So, as far as I can tell, that's the impact to the city could possibly be, as all funds in the state will be, will be looked at to backfill the shortfall, that would be ours. But I don't know if anyone else has any comments from their particular area of responsibility. Okay. Next, I just wanted to point out, the annual calendar from South Fork, produced by South Fork Water Board, it's students in the elementary schools of our districts put these pictures together, and they're extremely poignant and charming, and Oregon City has seven of the 12 months. So, please feel free to get your free copy on the, at the front desk. Let's see if that's, and I believe that that's all my report for this evening. We have C4 coming up on Thursday, and, you know, a zillion meetings in the month, so any other further reports? Commissioner Nocita?
Okay, four matters, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to report on my visit on Monday. Commissioner Smith was also in attendance at the CIC meeting, the Citizens' Involvement Meeting. And as Mr. Guile reported earlier this evening, it was a very crowded, boisterous meeting, and it was, it was just fun to be, fun to be there. I was invited by the CIC to discuss the memo I had written to the community regarding rethinking the development of the North End, and I got to chat about that. After I had agreed to speak, I got the agenda, and it was interesting because although this had not been disclosed to me when I accepted the invitation, it turned out that I had been set up in a debate, pro and con, with some other party- I had been set up in a debate, pro and con, with some other party taking the con side.
Who took the con side?
Mr. Slack did. And it was, it was, it was a good discussion, it was very vibrant, and what really thrilled me more than anything was that there were very many new faces at the CIC who don't usually attend meetings such as that or come to City Hall here. And I was just very encouraged to see that there was an interest in, in public participation and community participation in the community, and so I'd like to thank the CIC for that invitation. And I would like to encourage citizens who might be watching tonight to take advantage of your Citizens' Involvement Council and, and come and participate, and it was set up specifically for, for you. And it's, it's one of your chances, as well as coming here for public comment, to come in and participate as well. So thank you for that opportunity, I very much enjoyed that. And along the same line of public participation, I would, Commissioner Smith and I, as the New Year dawn, would like to close the loop on one of our efforts throughout last year. And I would pass this out, and the commission is basically off, seen this already, so this won't be a surprise to anybody. Commissioner Smith and I both campaigned in 2008 on giving citizens the right to vote on urban renewal issues, both particularly the issuance of financial debt for urban renewal. And when we got elected, we entered office and attempted to come in and fulfill our campaign promise and try to get the City Commission to forward a referral to the citizens to allow them to vote on issuance of urban renewal debt. And just a quick summary of how this went over the course of the year. Our majority commission colleagues didn't want to act on it right away, and they referred the question to a City Commission work session. And at the City Commission work session, they again referred it down to the Urban Renewal Commission. Then at the Urban Renewal Commission, I recall Mayor Norris wanting to further defer it down to a subcommittee of the Urban Renewal Commission. And it got delayed over several agenda items for several weeks, and I finally forced a vote. I think Commissioner West, Commissioner Smith was absent that day, and I think I lost that vote to recommend that the Urban Renewal Commission recommend to this body to refer the vote question to the, to the voters. So there we are. We would like to close that loop, and getting our commission colleagues to finally have the opportunity to actually take a vote here on the City Commission. So this is not unfamiliar to our colleagues, we've presented this language to our colleagues before, and there's been ample discussion of it on the Urban Renewal Commission. It doesn't have to be this exact language, but I'm going to formally move that this City Commission refer to the citizens of an Oregon city, a referral vote, to allow them to decide the question as to whether the citizens of Oregon City may vote on the establishment of urban renewal districts, the amendment of urban renewal districts and plans, I'm sorry, the establishment of an urban renewal district and plan, the amendment of an urban renewal district and plan, and the issuance of debt financing for urban renewal projects.
Commissioner Nocita, move back, Commissioner Nocita, second by Commissioner Smith. We have discussed this over and over again, multiple times, and there's no interest in it in the Urban Renewal Commission. We have looked at the practices and processes of other cities, there's no, we could find no community in Oregon, no city in Oregon that conducts their urban renewal business in this way. And it's not been advertised on the agenda either, so I, I don't believe that's within our processes that you bring up an important issue like this without placing it on the agenda first for discussion.
I may respond to that?
Hey, this is, we're, we're on discussion.
Because we've placed it on several, we've placed it on several agendas.
And it's been defeated, this has been-
It's been discussed, and this commission has never voted on it. And we would like to, to close the loop and have this commission say to the voters of Oregon Cities what they think about whether the citizens have a right to vote on these matters.
Yeah, I don't think the issue is whether the citizens have a right to vote. I think it is way more complex than that, and as we've discussed multiple times in multiple venues, the business of a, the Urban Renewal Agency acts as a business development agency, and business cannot be conducted through a vote of the people. And it's, we have public processes for each piece of it, we have, I'm, I'm not at all against for, against the citizens voting for the formation of an urban renewal district and determining its boundaries, but to vote on individual plans would be a death knell, I think, for business in our community. Any other speakers before we vote? Okay, seeing none?
I will say one thing.
Commissioner Smith?
When this topic has come up in, in the past, especially in past issues in urban renewal spending, you know, we all have our own viewpoints on various projects within the city. But I feel I'm here, elected, to represent the citizens of Oregon City, and I do that, I feel that I do that. The problem is, however, that we all talk to citizens around the community to get a feeling about what the community desires, what it is that they want, and we use that as a basis to make our decisions. Numerous major projects in the city, the majority of this commission feels that the citizens of Oregon City support a lot of the things that we're doing with urban renewal. The minority of this commission believes that the majority of the citizens in this town do not support it. So our ask, our reason for supporting this is if in fact the citizens of Oregon City, if truthfully the citizens of Oregon City really support what we're doing with urban renewal, then let them vote on it. And if we really, truly believe, if this, the majority of this commission truly believes that what we are doing is what the citizens want, then let them vote and tell us. Let them vote and tell us. And if they vote and tell us that what we're doing is the right direction, I will fully support it, fully support what we are doing and the path that we are on. But it's their choice, and I believe they have the right to choose on that. So we'll leave it at that.
Again, if it was such a good idea, there would be at least one community in Oregon that would have adopted something like this.
It has to start with one.
Well, I don't, I don't see that anyone, you know, the certified smart people that we work with and other agencies and across the state have found that this is a good way of doing business within a community and developing the thriving business sector and doing the urban renewal as it, as it needs to be done. So I, I just can't support this, and I, and I know that many of the partners that we are working with in urban renewal wouldn't, wouldn't support this either. Commissioner Neely?
I don't, I don't, I don't mind this coming forward as an agenda item discussion. We've had, although we've had this dialogue before, we have now a specific recommendation for a charter amendment, and I'm going to vote no on this, but I would vote no more from the standpoint, it is not an agenda item. And if, if you wish to give some time for responses to be developed in terms of the debate, I've got no problem from this coming forward again. But we don't have as an agenda item.
It's not been advertised, there's no opportunity for citizens to participate?
I don't think that would be useful. I don't think that would change the vote, and I guess as far as an agenda item, it's, it's been, it's been an agenda item multiple times throughout the calendar year, not 2009. I mean-
We don't have majority support for it.
You don't know where, I mean, I think we know where everybody stands, I think it's just appropriate that we record where everybody stands.
We already did in urban renewal.
I'll call the question.
Any more comments?
Yeah, I do have, before we call, because I haven't had a chance to speak to, other than saying a preference for an action, having an agenda item which you're not interested in doing. I would simply state this, that there are many important items the City Commission votes on. The public, for one thing, I think votes to have us make decisions, hard decisions, and I don't think it expects us to refer every single hard decision we make to them. They assume that we're going to look at the various issues, and, you know, the, the public at one point has a way of dealing with that, it can vote people out of office. That's, that's a mechanism that, that can be dealt with. And so if, I mean, there are other important items that we vote on, there are budget items that are costly items that we might vote a majority to support it, and then we say, "Well, yes, we support it, but we want to take it to the, to the public first." And that is an arduous process, and, and I don't think we'd ever get anything done, because it would take us forever to get that process going. Since you're not interested in bringing it as an agenda item, I'll just say, I'll call the question.
Okay. Nancy, would you please pull the commission?
Commissioner Neely?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
And Mayor Norris?
No.
Motion defeated.
Okay, thank you. Two more items. One is directed to the city manager. I've got a question, a budget question regarding bonuses and holiday bonuses, and the process for granting them, and how they're budgeted, and how much we expended on them this past holiday season.
Do you have a report?
Okay, when, when, at the next commission meeting?
We'll be notified when you're in the next one.
Okay, okay, thank you. Last item I have relates to our police negotiations. Back before the New Year, I recall there was an agenda item for an executive session that, when I noticed, indicated that it was relating to labor negotiations. And that executive session was abruptly canceled, and I didn't think heads or tails of it. I knew we were, after having completed the negotiations with the ASME, we were going to enter into negotiations with the police union, and was anticipating that, and I think I recall raising, in a commissioner comment like this, a prospect that we might consider having some of the commission on that bargaining team and respecting the majority of the commission's interests and not, not doing that. So it's come to my awareness over the past couple of days that the negotiations with the police union are well, well underway, and that I was made aware that Mr. Lefler was in fact today engaging in the negotiations with the police union. I have a concern that I want the commission to address regarding that, because the process that we went through with the ASME union was that we had an executive session where staff presented to us a proposal that we, you know, concurred with, and that was brought to the ASME union as representing the commission, the governing body of Oregon City, as the position of the city with, you know, the statute sets up an adversarial process. So I am kind of flummoxed by the fact that we have not engaged in a single executive session regarding the negotiations with the police union. We've never, as a commission, been presented with a discussion about what the cities offer, what our side of the table is presenting to the police union in these negotiations. The bargaining team is, is representing that this is the city commission's, you know, position, and we have not talked about it. And I have to say, I'm just flummoxed by this. So I would like to, I'd like to actually ask for an executive session. I don't want to know if we can do this either on an emergency basis or how, but it just, it makes no sense to me that there are negotiations going on without the city's established, position established by the city commission.
Let's ask for staff response first.
Well, the executive session that was scheduled and canceled wasn't, wasn't mine, it wasn't regarding bargaining, that was, I believe, Mr. Patterson's, initially we were going to talk about it. We've met twice with, for bargaining so far, and other than that, I would prefer to go into executive session to discuss what exactly has happened.
Well, yeah, it is unusual that we don't sit down together and talk about the parameters for bargaining, so have we missed a step here somewhere?
It was, it was a relatively fast-moving, faster-moving process than, than we anticipated, and I can elaborate more on that.
Let's, if, can we go into executive session without posting it?
We would just need a few minutes, because I'm not prepared for another executive session.
Okay, well, let's make sure we finish all the other announcements that we need to have, and then-
Add some additional things, but yes, we, we can do that when, because we're already in.
I think that's probably desirable. Is that your list? Is that your list? Are there any other announcements that need to come before us this evening? Okay, then I will adjourn this meeting to go into executive session. No, I think it's adjourned. We're not planning on coming back, are we?
Executive session is, is considered a, a meeting that typically what, what happens is it's recess, go into executive session, come back, and then adjourn the meeting at the end of the executive session.
Why?
Because the, you know, you've got a meeting, what we're doing is taking the meeting, taking it into executive session, it'd be a separate, if we adjourn this meeting, it'd be a new meeting.
All right, we will recess to executive session pursuant to RS 1922660, section F?
6402D, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations.
Thank you. All right, we will return.